Please silence your cell phone, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. And the agendas are located at the back of the chambers, and they're on the bookcases if you need one. First, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Brian, if we could. And let's go ahead and do that first. Thank you. Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Ms. Holly, please. Thank you, Brian.
No, that's the board motion, ma'am.
Okay. Do we need a motion, please?
Moved, approved.
Moved by La Croix. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Picked up by Busch. Any discussion?
Yes. Did we change the... When did we change the board's agenda policy?
What? I guess you need to clarify, please.
Right after you and I took office three years ago, there was... The commission passed an agenda policy that...
Pull your mic up for me, George, please. Thank you, sir.
Passed a policy required any agenda submitter to jump through a bunch of hoops to get on the agenda. And there's two items on here that shouldn't be on the agenda based on that policy.
Which two are those, sir?
Number 16. And before I mention the second one, when we approve the agenda, are we approving the entire agenda to include planning and zoning, or just the regular commission agenda?
The entire agenda, if I'm correct.
Okay. In that case, item under planning and zoning is J, 19J.
Okay.
Those two items shouldn't be, according to our policy that I opposed three years ago, according to that policy, those items shouldn't be on the agenda this time.
Mr. Busch had put on the agenda, if I'm correct, 16A, so he had told Holly to put that on there. So that was put on there on Wednesday, when the policy, we say you have to put it down there by Wednesday, so that was approved. And then, Mr. Horton, did he put this on the agenda?
Correct, ma'am. The applicant requested it be placed on the agenda.
Okay, so those two have been requested. So they were put in on Wednesday, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly?
In time, correct, ma'am.
Per the agenda rules, so... What are you saying, Commissioner Fairby, please?
Once again, the policy that was adopted required jumping through a whole bunch of hoops. You had to do this, and this, and this, and this, and this to get on the agenda. And all those things didn't happen, or at least they're not in the packet. At least not in my packet, so those two items should be removed from the agenda.
Okay. Is that a motion, or...?
That's my motion, yes.
Is there a motion, is there a second? To remove item 16A and...
And 19J.
And J for the... Planning and zoning?
A second for discussion to get specifics is what we're... What are missing.
Okay. So there's a second discussion, please, on the motion. Commissioner La Croix.
16A, I think, was properly went through. I guess I'd like to have more clarification from George on the specifics of why he doesn't think... You know, 19J, I think, you know, it was previously on the agenda, and we had a continuance type thing. So I mean, for a person to request it put back on, I don't think it's out of line. So I guess I'd just like to know the specifics of why he would not want him on.
I'll repeat, number 16.
No, he's asking for number J.
Okay.
Sorry.
So 19J, the first thing that should happen is my motion should be rescinded, or the motion that was made by this board and approved by this board should be rescinded before that item can be put back on the agenda. I'll read, September 21st minutes. Moved and seconded to continue this item until Mr. Horton and Kelsey Alexander can come up with a recommendation for the board. That motion should stand, or those parties should come to us with the recommendation. The first thing that should happen is the motion should be rescinded.
If we're going to keep it on the agenda.
If, before we can address it again, either the motion is complied with, or it's rescinded. And neither has happened.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. I think the applicant, before we take this off, should be able to comply or say if this had happened, because then we wouldn't have to resent it if he said he had found a recommendation.
I think, I agree with you, but I also feel that... Sorry. I agree with you, but I also feel that the second party, according to George's motion, both parties were supposed to come to some sort of... Come to us with some sort of recommendation, and only one party's here, so...
So far, it's only 5:10 after 9:00. She's not going to be here.
So I don't feel that we should discuss it until both parties are present.
Oh. It doesn't get any simpler. There's not a recommendation before us by these two parties.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, let's take a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
No. Motion carries, we'll leave them both on the agenda.
Motion failed.
Yes, sir. 3 to 2, sir. Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion on the agenda and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one... Consent again, agenda, Ms. Holly.
Morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting on November 20th, 2017. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting November 21st, 2017. Number seven is to set the 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting dates. Number eight is to approve the Idolize Mountain Improvement Association Agreement renewal as submitted by the Highway Department. Number nine is to declare four vehicles, including one 2011 Tahoe and three 2014 Forest Tourist Police Interceptors as surplus for the purpose of trade as part of the 2018 planned vehicle replacement as submitted by the sheriff. And finally, number 10 is authorization to purchase five vehicle... Five replacement vehicles, including four Dodge Chargers, one Chevrolet Tahoe per state contract, 17149, as presented by the sheriff.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Do we have any citizen that would like to remove any items 5 through 10 from our consent agenda today? Not do we have any commissioner that would like to remove any items 5 through 10 on the agenda today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd like to remove number nine, just for clarification on...
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10, please?
So moved.
Moved by La Croix. Seconded by Busch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Number nine, Mr. DeSanto. Brian Mueller, please.
Hi, Brian. I'm just wondering, on the four vehicles, for the public's information, how many miles are on them? Why are we trading them in?
Yeah, thank you. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office here today, speaking on behalf of Sheriff Tome. This was part of our annual vehicle replacement process that we do every year for replacing our patrol vehicles. And we generally try to run our patrol vehicles to between 115,000 and 120,000 miles at the time of trade. So all of these are projected to between March and May, when the trade would actually take place, to have right around that 120,000 mile mark on that. And I know a lot of people... A lot of people run their vehicles to higher miles than that, but these vehicles are used pretty hard. So they have, you know, the odometer doesn't record, you know, runtime, so a lot of times these vehicles sit in idle. And obviously, for law enforcement purposes, they need to be reliable, and we've found that to be a good breaking point for doing the trades on those vehicles.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
Any other questions on number nine? If not, can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Started by DeSanto. Seconded by La Croix. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next, we're on regular agenda items 11 through 18. First, we'll have volunteer committee appointments, Special Animal Keeping Regulations Committee. Do... Is Darla Volk here today? About Heather Blair? Michael Lewis, did you want to speak again, sir?
No, plus I need to.
Okay. Tina Malali, did you want to speak again? Nope. Carol Gilbertson? Did you want to speak again, Ms. Carol? Okay. Okay. Susan Sanders? Frank DeSerra? James Coleman? Nope. Royce King? Would you like to speak, sir?
I will, if you have questions.
Okay. Thank you. So, Commissioners, we do have the list, and... Let me see. I think we're looking for five, if I'm correct. Can someone correct me if I'm wrong?
That's what I was just looking for. We're looking for five, or we're looking for an odd number.
Sorry.
That's what I was looking for on this volunteers, is what we're actually looking for is... I think we had five applicants, now we have nine. I don't think we really set a certain number. We just would like an odd number, because I think Mr. DeSanto and Travis are going to be non-voting members but helping run this committee, if I'm correct.
Do we want nine members? Board?
Madam Chair, I recommend appointing them all. All the volunteers, let them all... I agree.
Okay. So...
Moved to approve all nine members. Seconded.
Okay. There've been a move... Motion and a second to approve all nine members. I think that's pretty good, because that's a lot of voices, which is even better. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. You're all on the board. Ms. Holly will get ahold of you when the meetings are, and make sure she knows your phone number and your email address, if you would, please.
Thank you for stepping up.
Yes, thank you very much. Those committees are pretty exciting, because you get a lot of good conversation, so thank you all. Number 12 is lien release request.
Madam Chair, I need two seconds to get her on the phone. That went way faster than I anticipated.
While we're waiting, Madam Chair, we think most of the folks are looking at chickens, but there's been some discussion of splitting that committee into two, and one talking... Or one group talking about chickens, and the other talking about the other special animals or whatever is... Should we just leave that to the committee?
I think they can take care of both, because we did mining, and alternative energy, we just went from one to the other. So I think you have enough nine people qualified, that's my opinion, George, to take care of both chickens and larger animals.
But it's more than chickens.
Yes.
That's what I said. Chickens and larger animals.
It was advertised as Special Animal Keeping Committee.
Madam Chair, she's not picking up. If you'd like to proceed, I will try to get ahold of her.
Can we table this item until we have her on the phone?
Moved to table.
Moved to table by DeSanto. Seconded by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Number 13, please. Miss Steph. The way, Ms. Steph, thank you for meeting with me. I appreciated your time.
Morning. Steph McCoy with the Sheriff's Office.
KJ Peterson, Auditor's Office.
And we are back again with a request to amend our compensation practices here in Pennington County, with the goal of having something more refined and efficient going into the 2019 budget process. So in your packets, you were given Meeting Prior's handout for reference, and then we went a little different direction to maybe simplify the conversation, or get the direct answers, or motions that we need to move forward and draft actual policy, instead of continuing to come with a large packet, changing one thing or another each round. So what you have before you is a short memo. It's pretty direct. I'm going to go through each one of the five points, and then Commissioner Higginck will go through each one again for any motion or discussion from that, if that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Steph.
So as you can see, the goal is to get some of these answers solidified today, so we can move forward on putting policies together, with our end goal from the Compensation Committee being February 2019, with the policies in place moving into the budget process. So the first question being, what number do you want to use for COLA for the budget presentations? Again, currently, we don't have COLA in our handbook as a policy. So if we can nail down where you want that percentage to come from, that can go into the policy, and then that is used for preparations for the budget. That doesn't mean that you're going to give it to employees. It means that that's how we prepare our budgets. Second question is step increases. And we just... Currently, we give step increases in January or July, January or July. So the question is, do we want to change that to the anniversary date and award the employee upon their hire date, or continue to do it every six months? Third question, longevity pay. I think the big question is, when do you want that to start? At the last meeting, Commissioner DeSanto suggested looking at two years, or why the 10 years? So then we went to five or 10, just for some direction from you. Number four is adjusted sick leave payout. The two tables below, one is the current benefit, beginning after three years of service. The second is our suggestion from the committee, where it begins at 10. And then number five, this is the amendment to the current new hire policy. And this has been talked about for some time now. I know Commissioner Fairby, you brought it up as that discretion shouldn't be a one-time thing upon hire. And so our recommendation was to amend that throughout the first year. We're just looking for your direction on that as well, so...
Thank you, Ms. Steph. So, Board, if it's okay, if we go through each number, is that what we wanted? Okay. So I thought it'd be easier, but if the Board wanted to change that, that would be fine, too. So discussion on number one would be, do you want to use state statute for automatic COLA moving forward on the county budget preparation? And the percentage to come from where on the budget?
Madam Chair, I think this was one of the original things of Compensation Committee, was why we started doing this, was to add it in there. I mean, it's not saying it's going to stay, but for preparation, you have the numbers to work off. And I know there were some concerns that, you know, it may be some years, we may not, but at least at budget preparation, you can start planning for what that is. So I think that was a good part of the policy myself.
Good, thank you, Lloyd.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
And Lloyd, do you feel that the state statute, or a 1%, what are you leaning towards?
State. I think we go by what the state does with the CPI. I mean, if it's going to be 1%, 0, 1.5, could be 3. I mean, I think those are pretty researched numbers, and I think that's a good way to go to stay even with the states.
I would like to recommend a cap. State statutes with a cap of 3?
Yeah.
1%?
Their recommendation. Busch, Mr. Fairby?
Refresh us, when does the state set the COLA? January, February, March?
February.
Ms. Julie said February. We have an echo out there.
February is what... We have that information from the state.
Reason for my question, Madam Chair, is that would give us sufficient time before the budgeting gets too far underway to decide whether to grant the COLA or not, or authorize the COLA in the budgeting process.
Sure.
We normally start budgeting like in March, April.
Yeah, we can start not... We can't start budgeting prior to the state granting us the CPI and us receiving growth numbers from the Director of Vehicleization. It happens to be about February or March, right in there by the time we get it. The state law captures or seals the CPI at 3.
They do.
So, yes. You don't have to include that as a separate motion unless you wanted it less or more. It states it exactly from a specific... Specific field, workers out of the Denver region, and it's, when we get it in February, it's, of course, consistently two years old by the time we apply it. And it's capped regardless at 3%.
Very well.
However, if it's a negative, it is then considered zero. So I don't know if you'd want to make into consideration if it's negative, it's only happened once.
I don't feel like we should make consideration for negative. It's zero.
But you wouldn't need to add a cap unless you wanted it less than the 3% cap. That's the word I was thinking. That's in state law.
That's Ms. Julie Pearson from the auditor's office. Not citizens telling us how we do stuff. Mr. Busch?
Well, I don't have a problem with setting something where... For the state, I guess. I don't like the words "automatic." It's an automatic COLA. It's an automatic step increases. To me, that indicates we're going to do that. And we're not going to do that, or at least as long as I'm on here, we're not going to do that. We still have to look at the growth and... If we... How much money we've got. I mean, just to say, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do that, takes all the power away from this commission, which I think, that's why we get elected, is to do some of these hard decisions. But, you know, if we're just going to do it, as I've heard today, just to start the preparations and so we don't have to go through, what are we going to do? Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Then I, considering what Ron just said, I would... When we do write up the final wording, we should pay... Put the state statute in consideration of COLA.
I was going to suggest something that said, state statute for budget preparation as well. And that way, we don't come in every year from... At the point where we start talking about budgets and say, now what are we going to do? And that takes several meetings. This sets it, and from there, the board and any future board that comes along will address individual budget years as needed. So we can...
What's...
We want to lose the word "automatic."
So what's the difference than what we've been doing before? Anything?
Every year, we come in and talk about this for several budget... During several commission meetings prior to... As we begin each budget.
There'll be no change from what we're doing? We're not preparing anybody for?
It won't be coming in at... Whether the word is automatic or state statute, once that's received in late February, early March, Julie will report that to the board and probably start talking about timelines for it, but it won't be, what are we going to do this year? What are we going to do this year? So anyway, we'll start each year with what the COLA is that's presented, and then during the course of budget preparation, as you all know, from somewhere along April, May, all the way to September, would be if the board needed or wanted to make changes at that point.
So wasn't there something in here before about automatic 1%? Can you...
So that's different. That's down here when we're talking about steps.
Okay. I apologize. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I think what this does is gives the staff and the department's direction. I think when we started this last year, that's what they're kind of looking for, is to kind of plan ahead and start doing it a little bit earlier, so they know. I think the past meetings, we'd come in and we'd have big discussion on this COLA and this stuff. This way, the budget's prepared. The commission decides, we know the exact numbers it is. If we don't like it and we need to cut, we can do that. But it's just for their own preparation and getting prepared, I think, is more of what this is, that could save a lot of time for all parties involved.
Basically, it's no change. So we're on number two?
No, no. Wait a minute. Now, you're... Is it automatic, or are we going to decide?
No.
Not automatic.
We're just going to go through each one of these, and they want our direction.
No, no, no. We're talking COLA. Are we going to decide, we're going to let the department heads budget automatically, or are we going to give them direction like we have every year in February, March?
We want to vote on...
Budget guidance.
Sorry, Commissioner Fairby. Do we need to vote on each one of these? Do we want to vote now?
No.
Because if we change our mind next year... Because if we change our mind next year, um...
That's why we're asking for answers to these questions today, so we can continue to proceed with.
Where we need to move forward.
With policy.
Okay.
Based on the, on the motions, if we can, if the board is so inclined today, uh, we'll have, we'll have a much better direction on what you want and go from there.
Madam Chair, if I might, in the, in view of Commissioner Busker's al�ment statements about our responsibilities, I think we should continue doing it the way we have and give budget guidance in February, early March, for not just COLA, but everything else that we've been given guidance for. And the way Commissioner Busker made the al�ment speech and said the opposite, but that's, but, but I still believe in what he said. I agree with him. That's our responsibility each year to give direction and decide whether or not to take COLA.
Madam Chairman, the overriding consideration here is that we can't make decisions for future commissions anyway. These are going to be recommendations from this board, uh, that next year, if it's, you know, we might go to the same board next year, but year after that, uh, they can do whatever they want. But I, I don't have a problem with saying, for, for the initial budget preparations, use the state COLA. I don't have a problem with that. Don't necessarily mean that I would ever vote for it, but it might, depending on the final figures, what they look like, you know?
And that's where I'm at, that you can vote on these, but depending on what the numbers are next year and where we're going and what we have to, um, prepare for, for the next year, you can say yes to these today and end up going, okay, I don't agree with this because of the way our budget's going this year, so.
Madam Chair, one more comment if I might, uh, when, when all the folks that are paying the bill are, have some assurance that, uh, they're gonna get a pay raise, then, then I would vote for something like this. In the meantime, I'm opposed.
Opposed to?
I'm opposed to.
COLA?
The car, the department heads automatically cranking that into their budget.
Okay, so. So are we voting on, basically, do you wanna use the state statute for automatic COLA?
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe we're voting on anything today. I think they're gonna bring back final presentation, right? We're just giving you direction as to.
Are you comfortable using the state statute to, for that number to come from as a source for the number?
Okay.
That's.
Is that what we're saying?
I think that's what, they're looking for some clear direction. If you get.
I just took a straw poll and I heard three to two. Did I get that right?
So I think Busker, Busker, you, you were okay with state statute?
Yeah.
DeSanto, Haddock, I mean, that's what you're asking us?
That's, that's why I was, just if, if we're not gonna get motions, I, I was gonna rely on straw poll.
Okay.
Mark Vragel, Pennington County State's Attorney, I think that's exactly what the department heads are hoping to get, is more or less a straw poll. Because if we look at the whole thing, we can't vote on next year's budget yet, and putting all of it together was very difficult. That's why we tried to break it out into these five questions that would assist us in creating the budget. As Commissioner Busker said, it's not binding on anyone. Even if our commission's exactly the same, people can change their vote. So it has nothing to do with trying to do the budget now for next year. It's just, as we start to get ready, what do we need to have for you guys?
Thank you, sir. Okay, number two, for automatic step increases, do we award two steps on anniversary date for the entire year or one in January and one in July dividing the year?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
It was my understanding when we went, started all this, that we were getting rid of steps in, in exchange for longevity. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
You're gonna have both, both steps and longevity now?
So they, they would be two very different things. Those, so steps are, are how we move based on our years of service. Whether it's an annual step based on, on being here, which would be more in the lines of, of a longevity philosophy, or if it's based on merit, which we've, we've heard fairly clearly that, that we're not interested in at this time. Longevity pay is something extra above and beyond the hourly rate of pay that you receive. It's something separate, either monthly as a differential or, or annually as, as a, as a differential. So they're, they're two different things.
I understand they're two different things.
Yeah.
But it was my thought process that we were gonna hire based on our steps, bring them in at X step over a period of six months. I don't remember what we decided. You were gonna review basically how this employee did, and then they're, then they get to their starting wage step, I guess, so to speak. And then from that point forward, we won't be discussing steps any longer. We'll be giving longevity raises. Am I totally off base here?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll answer as I'm the.
Commissioner LeCrae?
Thank you. I know where you're going, Mark, because part of the discussion, I think Steph and KJ is, is what they were talking about. We can't go below what the starting wage is. And I think that's was, was some of the concept of when they said the starting wage, and then the steps would be what the base pay should be, but, but they really, starting wage is what the job pays, and the steps is more or less a performance, or if they can do the job, then they get those steps. I'm looking for the HR for more help.
So we have the steps now that, that in a perfect world would, would align with your years of service. It's not worked that way for a long time, but the scale is designed that way. What you're asking for, we can do, but that's not what we've, what we've discussed or crafted to date. It can be done, but it's, it's different than what you see in front of you.
Do you five commissioners understand where I'm coming from?
Well.
No.
I, I think we're mixing apples and oranges.
Yeah, I don't remember.
We're, we're mixing, we're mixing things and, uh.
No. What, Steph, tell me about the steps a little bit. How much, how many steps can you go up and on, on the most amount of money? If someone gave them, I think it's seven steps, right?
That is current policy when you're hired.
You can go up seven steps, but, um, where do you usually hire at? Do you usually, do most people go up and go, okay, she's gonna be 24 at step four? Or do we usually start? What's the majority, maybe KJ?
Ninety, ninety-five, ninety-six percent of, of new hires are, um, starting and have been forever in, um, at, at the entry level, step one of their job.
Okay, so the other question would be, what if, um, Mr. Witcher, I'm gonna pick on New Year upfront today, so what if Mr. Witcher gave seven steps? What was the highest, I think I looked and we talked about the step, what's the highest if Mr. Witcher says, well, this guy or girl is worth this much, I'm gonna not start her here, I'm gonna move her up? Is it, I think we talked to be like a dollar fifty if he went up seven steps at the most?
Right, right, so it's a percentage. Each step is a, a one and a quarter percent, so he has seven, one and a quarter percent step discretion when you hire somebody based on their service. So if I come in and I apply for, for a human resources position and I have 20 years of experience, the most you can offer me is, is 10%. Essentially above starting, depending on what that starting wage is, it's somewhere between that, that dollar fifty and two dollars on the high end that you can give somebody.
So if we, what I'm saying is if we gave him the discretion, we're not giving him discretion to take him up thousands of dollars, we're giving the discretion at the most to give him a dollar fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be thousands, I should say, but.
Excuse me, Commissioner Haddock, addressing, I think, more of item number five, because when we go back to item number two and you say, how many steps are there on the scale that we currently work with, uh, that was implemented in 2015, um, and, and completed by Condry? There's thirty-four steps, not, not a total of seven.
Right.
Seven is where you can hire in at.
Yes, ma'am.
Total steps over the course of a lifetime career, if somebody came in and started at a staff assistant and stayed at a staff assistant, um, is, would be to reach step thirty-four. Those steps being one and a quarter percent.
Well, I thought it kind of related to number two, because if you don't have the understanding how the steps work, and then you're saying too automatic on their anniversary, but we start 95% of them at starting wage, then it doesn't look like Pennington County's just giving everybody a raise every, you know, with the two-step. And that's why I wanted some of that information.
They don't get hired in at six and seven. Occasionally, you see on, in your packets that come, uh, to every board meeting are the new hire letters, you'll see somebody with some prior experience, a previous dispatcher from another county, and they might bring them in at two or three. Occasionally, you'll have a specific one, uh, of an employee with, uh, many years of prior service in a, and that's when you see department heads specifically come and ask you for an exception, because they're wanting to get that person hired in at twenty or fourteen or something. They can't do that through a letter, they have to come to you.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Now, I remember the discussion on this was, um, the biggest change on this, from this policy was anniversary date. It used to be twice a year, January, and so, and we wanted to go to, on the anniversary date, 'cause it made more sense, that, from the, uh, from the committee's point of view.
And the implementation of that, we'll see some dollar savings as it's staggered out throughout the.
So on the anniversary, sorry.
It's nothing like it's changed. The only thing that's really changing from the original policy is anniversary date. And, and I just wanted to make the clarification to Steph. Now, when we talk about these steps, there's been reductions in the steps from, I think it used to be two point five quite a while ago, and it recently was one point, point one, two, five, and now.
Then when it went to one five, and now it's one and a quarter.
Yeah, and, and part of the proposal through the, through all the talks is now it's down to point one.
It was a suggestion.
That was just a suggestion.
Well.
Just a suggestion, okay. So that's later, okay.
We never want less.
And the anniversary date makes sense if we're going to give steps, but should they be automatic is what I keep hearing. 'Cause to me, the anniversary date of someone's hire makes more sense than January and July, if we're gonna give steps. The other thing is, or, I guess, for the automatic step increases, do we award two steps on anniversary? Okay, so, um, this board needs to decide. I always thought when we did this, and this is how we did it before, if we decided to award them, it would be on, like you said, January and July, but on this would be anniversary, which would make sense if we decided to give those steps when we do our budget. But you're saying now that you automatically, on the step increases, do we award two steps? Am I correct? On the anniversary date, no matter what, every year, we give them two steps?
That's the proposal. There was discussion of just giving one and having one be discretionary, and that was, uh, uh, it sounded like not, uh, very receptive toward the board, so.
What if you didn't want to give? 'Cause sometimes they don't wanna give any, so.
Well, uh, we did have the discussion that, um, you know, as the policy was finalized, I mean, um, that, that there would be a caveat in there, that if an employee was on a, on a performance improvement plan, that, um, they would not get anything on their anniversary, and then could, uh, once they've completed the performance improvement plans, which Steph could probably speak better, I'm guessing generally they're somewhere between ninety and a, and a hundred and sixty days?
Shorter.
Yeah. Are they shorter than that? Thirty and sixty?
Thirty to ninety, yeah.
Uh, that, that you could then, um, have the ability to, usually by the time that point is done, thirty to ninety days, you no longer have an employee or you have someone deserving of a pay increase.
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a minute. Commissioner Busker?
Well, this is exactly what I feared, and it's exactly what came true. We'll give automatic pay increases every year. Where did that come from? We used to give, I think, one step and it was two percent. Now it's down to one percent, except we can give two. No difference, but.
One step and it was two and a half. So I think that that, as a presentation for the commission, is where the two steps at one and a quarter.
If you're gonna give automatic step increases, that is the longevity pay. I'm sorry, it's the same thing. You can call it what you want.
I'd like to respond. I, I.
Commissioner LeCrae?
Ron's right, and when they originally drafted this, Ron, and we were in the conversation, and we didn't want it to be automatic, we wanted it to be discretionary if the performance is right. But when they first come forward with the presentation, George was the one that suggested that he wanted to see an audit, they should know exactly what they're gonna make every year's, and so they went back and come, and put in automatic. And so now we're back to talking about automatic again. I think that's why they're here, looking for clarification of how we should do it. Am I correct? Okay.
It's either a career ladder or, or, or it's merit-based. It's one or the other. I'm hearing from a few of you that you're looking for the career ladder. So, I mean, either way, you have the discretion through the budget process to do whatever you want with the policy. We have a policy currently that's not been applied since 2013, to my knowledge, on, on merit pay, and that merit pay's put in there, but it can be taken out, the percentage can be changed.
So it's stagnated?
Yeah, yeah, so it's just, it's the mechanism, and it's what we can tell the employee, okay, here's our policy, that doesn't mean it's gonna happen, it's based on a lot of variables, but, but here's what you can anticipate happening. That, that's kind of what we're looking for, and that goes back to where you're like, what, six months, where am I gonna be at a year? And, and it gives you some, some comfort and some, you know?
But you, you, you work at a company downtown, and you don't get those guarantees. You can might, there might be people who work 20 years for some company and never get a raise. They don't say, well, you know, you're gonna get a raise every so often here. They don't do that. And, uh, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay, here's the crux of this. We have tried over the past month to put together what the commission ordered us. The problem is, you guys can't give us clear direction. We didn't have an automatic. The department heads like merit, based on performance. That's how we control our employees' performance. What we heard when we brought that back, which is what the current policy is, is that some that manage of the commissioners to open their mouths, no offense, said, we want them guaranteed. That was George's comment. So now we come back with the word automatic. That's how we got it. It was from what we could gather from what you people tell us. We can't do a policy unless we get direction from you. And we realize we're not gonna have a five oh vote. So just kill the discussion, make motions, take a vote, we'll go back and make it. 'Cause you're right, Ron, you can do anything you want in budget, you can have them in automatically or not, you can still take them out during budget, and no matter what you do, in a year, we're gonna possibly have a different board, and they can change it all anyway. What we heard from you during budget was you did not want to politicize this with a discussion every year. It's why we were disgusted wages and the city was disgusted how much taxes they raised, is because they don't discuss this. It is automatic. That's what we tried to bring back to you. So we can't go forward if you each keep saying, I want this, I want this, I don't want this, I want this, until we have a three-two vote. And that's the way we'll do it. If you don't wanna change it, that's what we heard from you. I promised we'd bring back something different, and, no offense, you guys are stalling it. We spent a lot of department head, commission, and staff time on this, and you guys still can't make a decision. We don't care what it is. I mean, yes, we do care, but we're gonna do what you tell us to do. And every time we come back, we get this little discussion of Ron and Mark and, and people, all, y'all make comments, but we don't get a clear cut, even a straw poll, we can't tear on this. If they're automatic, fine, we'll do automatic. If they're not, fine, we'll continue with merit. That's what the policy is now. All we wanna do is try and get a policy that you guys seem to think that you wanna change back in budgeting, 'cause you didn't like it. We don't know what you don't like about it, but we're done spending time on this. We can leave it as it is.
Okay, Ms. Julie, we got the point. Thank you. Okay, Board.
Let me repeat. Longevity increases for two reasons. Number one is to incentivize employees to stay with, to be career employees. So if you hire on today, 10 years from now, you can look and this is what the pay scale will be, unless I change grades or whatever. But within every grade, there's thirty-four steps?
Correct.
So if you just, a truck driver is an example, for that county highway. 10 years down the stream, you can say, this is, I'll be making a little bit more. The second reason is, how many times I heard of wage compression? What's all of that is? With this system, that wage compression argument goes away. That's why I'm for longevity increases. The steps are set up so that it's probably a really good system. A step is every year or whatever period of time, the step matches the longevity. The starting wage, that's a separate argument. So if we're, if we're talking longevity, then let's talk longevity. If we're gonna talk starting wage, let's talk starting wage. But I'm all for longevity increases for those two reasons. Can't get, can't get much clearer, I don't think.
So what I'm hearing is then, if you like longevity, and I stay here every year, I should get my step or two, to make sure that I'm getting paid every year for my longevity, so by the time I'm done, I'm getting what I, what I need to. So.
It's a career enhancement. How, how much pension can it be?
I know, Commissioner Farby, but I'm listening to you, but what I'm hearing from you then is that you, you should give a step or two steps because of longevity. I'm gonna, every year I'm here, I should be increasing my pay until a certain amount. Isn't that what we're doing with step increases and what we were doing before?
We haven't had step increases in two years.
Okay.
And so that's where the compression comes from.
Right.
In the presentations that we've given to the board in the last month, we've addressed increases, moving up the scale and how it could be done. And in addition to that, we believed there was direction from the board to look at, and I'm gonna use Commissioner Farby's word, not longevity, time of service, which is a whole separate piece of pay, is a very common practice. We went to the state, we used to have it in Pennington County, um, and that we added at this time, right now, there is no time of service recognition in Pennington County. That does not mean that there isn't the ability to move up the scale that you work on, on a step, if the Board of Commissioners advises the department heads to prepare the current year budget in that fashion.
So when you're talking automatic step, if you did two steps, it'd be two and a quarter each time. How much is two and a quarter at the most that you can get?
Two steps on the current scale would be, would be, um, one and a quarter steps, so you'd be looking at two and a half, which is where the old scale initially was, and was kind of where we, what we used as a, as a ground. kind of where we, what we used as a, as a ground base.
So the seven steps only comes into play under number five, under a new hire, once you're employed. If we, I, I follow you. I follow you on the, the career steps. I follow that. If you, if you've been here three years, you probably should be on step three and you should have an idea that you can get to step three. I follow that for number two. I think we can work with that.
Okay.
And bring back some of what other agencies do. We can show you that and see if it matches what you're asking for. Then the new hire discretion, the step seven that you're referring to is under number five.
Yes.
So I don't know if we want to go to number three.
If that's okay, Board, let's talk about number five, since it kind of goes with. Is that okay?
I'm not going to give my opinion anymore. I would, I can vote right now. I'm afraid to give my opinion. Obviously, we're not elected to do that.
Okay, Ms. Busker. So, go to number five, please. Thank you.
All right. So we, we have a current policy. The current new hire policy is you can give that discretion on the front end only when you hire them. And we've talked about this for some time, that that's probably not the best point in an employee's career is to decide if they're going to raise to that standard that we think they will, based on what they bring to the table. So what we're asking is to take the same discretion that is currently held and extend it over a period of one year, so that we can truly determine if that twenty years they bring from another agency applies to what we're doing here today and they can do a good job. So that's what that's asking for, is you want to leave it as it is, you want to adjust it. That's where, and it's seven steps, because that's what's been allowed previously. If you want to go above that, they have to come in front of you and make that request.
It already exists. You look surprised there. That's why I'm clarifying that.
Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. This is one that I specifically went to the Compensation Committee and asked about it and asked for them to include it, because sometimes they're stuck with a resume and an hour-long interviewer set of interviews, to decide whether we bring somebody in at a starting wage, or a two, or a three, or up to a seven. It always struck me that that was awfully quick to be making that determination. I certainly want to be able to tell a person if, in fact, you work out. We'd like to, you know, I'd like to look in six months at bringing you up to a three, but I don't like promising that at the beginning. But our present policy forces me to make the decision. And if somebody's looking at that wage and that's important to them, then we can have to make that decision earlier. I think this will actually save the county money. We don't hire that often above the starting wage, so it's probably not a huge amount. But I do think that it's an appropriate mechanism. And just to be clear, because two meetings ago, we talked about whether there would be two sets. So in other words, I could bring them in at a seven and then I'd have another set of seven within the first year. That's not what's being proposed here. It's only seven total. So if I bring them in at a seven on the very first hire, then that's it, I'm done. I can't do anything else for the year. If I bring them in at the one, I have up to the seven over the course of the next year. So I think it'll allow us more information before we start paying anybody beyond a starting wage.
And that, to me, that makes sense, because then depending on their experience through the year, I can decide that, or not me, but the department heads can decide, well, I thought he should start at, you know, step twenty-four, number one, but now that we found out, you know, he has more experience than four or five people that we have here, now we want to bring him up to a step three, twenty-four, step three. To me, that makes sense, because that's, depending on your experience that we keep talking about and, and how hard you work. That makes a difference for me, so.
I've got a question, if I can, for...
Mr. DeSanto, please.
Go ahead, George. I'm just going to move to the...
Mr. DeSanto, that's okay.
You're, you're looking for a starting wage and then full flexibility by the department head as to when that person comes up to, to full speed, so to speak.
Well, up to that seven steps. Anything beyond that, we don't have the authority now and I'm not asking for any additional authority.
But from one to seven, whatever, full, full discretion for the department head as to when that person is ready for the normal paycheck.
Within the year. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now...
Commissioner DeSanto.
I would move to approve number five right now. I like it. That's perfect. I think it's...
So one and five, we've approved with, meaning state statute on number one, number five, the seventh step. Commissioner LaCroy.
I, you know, I agree with number five and one. Number two, I think we're going to have to do some more, you know, if I can do some work on a little bit. So we're, you ready to move on?
Well, let's vote on number five. Let's get it on the record.
Well, we haven't voted on anything, George.
Well, let's vote on number five.
Well, I made a motion to approve number five.
I know, guys, but...
I second.
Either we're going to vote on all of them?
No, we're not.
No, let's vote on one at a time.
We vote on number one and two?
Not yet. But we'll get there.
He's saying he wants to vote.
We'll take a motion on number five right now.
Move it in, move in second and let's vote.
Let's just go ahead and take the vote so they know what to go with.
Okay. Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number one on state statute.
I move to approve number one. I, oh, sorry. As written.
Is there a second? LaCroy, second.
Automatic in there.
There's a motion as second. Mr. DeSanto is number one. Number two is second. All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Aye.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. The motion is to approve it as written, without the automatics.
No.
Oh, for number two?
Number one.
Number one. Which is it? As written or without the automatics?
We're going to use state statute.
I mean, one or the other.
Okay. I would move to approve number one without the auto, without the automatic wording in there.
Okay. Second, or okay with that?
I'll second, yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And, now that's, that's, to make damn sure we're clear on this vote, we're going to decide, the commission's going to decide whether or not to accept a COLA.
Correct. Do that every year.
Authorize a COLA. Yeah. That's, that's the, that's the motion.
Thank you. Board, I'd appreciate if you addressed me so we know who's going to speak next instead of...
Got you.
Thank you. So we do have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Let's move to number four.
We're not going to do number two. We're just going to let them work on it.
Hold up on number two.
Continue number two? Is that what we're looking for? For them to work on it and listen to what the Board says.
Well, Madam Chair, right now, I don't think they know what to work on.
No.
Am I correct? On number two, you guys aren't clear as to what we want, so we need to have some further discussion on number two.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get the ones out of the way that we all agree on.
Okay. So what number would we like next?
Number four.
Okay, let's do number four.
Move to approve.
I'll second for discussion.
The current or the suggested?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I would move to, I think our initial talks was after ten years.
Yes. The suggested is what I was saying. Yeah. Okay.
I have a substitute motion.
Okay.
Let's wait until we get a new HR director hired and have him do some research as to what other government agencies across, across the nation do for sick leave. This is a messy, messy situation. And I, I don't want to see another person leave here with over a year of sick leave. And I, I think the HR guy, our gal, who do we hire? This is not a rush, obviously. So let's, let's table this one until the HR guy gets on board.
There's a second on that? Are you tabling it or continuing?
Continue.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with seconding that. I'd, I'd like to hear what he has to say, the HR.
Madam Chair. See, I, I, I struggle with this one, because a lot of these, what they come up with were some cost savings would help pay for other things. And so that's why this was part of, you know, moving it to ten years instead of the three years would help pay for the longevity that, that's been discussed. Some of them kind of go with one or the other, in my book. So I think the ten-year mark was something the whole group had come up with at this point. We could change it at any time. But I think you're changing it from three to ten, so you're actually extending it right now if you go with, with it. So instead of three, it's at ten. We could definitely revisit it later on. But I think that you kind of need that direction today.
And the cost savings is pretty high, isn't it, with that, Commissioner, or Ms. KJ?
The cost savings at approximately, with the three to ten years going away, would be about thirty thousand dollars a year.
Oh, so I thought it would be more.
Madam Chair. When there also discussion on lowering the amount of, of sick leave every month?
Yes. During the compensation, that never, that never got to this board. It was discussed in compensation. It was discussed at department head level and, and it didn't go any further.
I, I'm going to vote for George's motion. I think we need to have a little more discussion on that.
Okay. And, and the discussion should be, so we have direction for these guys on?
From the HR guy.
And what if we do not, so what if we do not hire HR guy for a while? Then what do we do? Just let this go to the next year?
It just exists as it is now.
Okay. So there's been a motion to continue. Mr. Vargo.
Well, I can wait for a second if you want.
There's, George has been for a second.
What I would suggest is, what this does is it relates to the point at which you're eligible for payout. It doesn't relate to how much you accrue or what percentage the payout would be, both of which I do think are probably appropriate to wait for a new HR director. But as far as when we pay out, this would give us some certainty that what we're doing here would assist in some of the other decisions we're asking the commission to make. So I think you could make this decision without impacting...
Madam Chair, if I might, to me, it's a package deal. Sick leave.
That's fair, but it's...
It's one of the messiest things, you know, you, if you don't incentivize people to, to save some sick leave, they're going to use it. I mean, it's, it's, you know, and so where is the happy medium?
Yeah.
Who knows? Looks like we got somebody in the audience that wants to speak on it.
We've got an audience, a member of the list to talk.
Okay.
Madam Chair, when is this going, when would this going to affect, anyway? Now, next year, probably.
We, in this memo that we sent, we, we hoped to get back to you with a document that could be approved by February, based on that being the period of time when, when CPI comes out and we're, we would be ready to have a, a policy to begin budget preparation.
So if somebody retiring in July is going to still go on this old system that we have, not the new one that we're voting on.
Right.
So there isn't a major emergency to get it...
There has to be a transition period, otherwise we're looking for a lawsuit, probably.
If you approved this today, I would agree wholeheartedly with, with our state's attorney and working in payroll, that all you would do was stop the sick leave payout for employees from three to ten years from this point going forward.
You would do that.
Unless you specifically gave me a date and said you wanted it to be January of nineteen and perhaps we need that as...
There has to be a transition.
So there's some transition.
And obviously, anything that's already accrued is paid out under the old policy. People have earned that. It's in our policy. That's what we would do. But it would allow the auditor's office to start keeping track of it separately from whatever date you pick going forward. So if you want to wait for the HR director to do that, that's fine. But if you don't, I do think that it's part of the package that we tried to create as department heads forth the board.
Okay. Mr. Richard, please.
And as Commissioner LaCroy pointed out when we were doing that, some of that was based on this would cause this and this would save this. So those were some of the logistics of what we were doing as Compensation Committee.
Ms. KJ, Mr. Richard.
Well, first of all, do you need sick pay?
Your name, sir.
Dan Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Citizen. Do you need sick pay? What do you give, how much time do you give for sick pay? How many weeks?
Eight hours a month.
Eight hours a month? Can you just put that on their regular vacation? And if they want to take sick leave, they can just take it off their vacation day? Or if you want to incentivize these people to not get sick, is at the end of the year, you take whatever sick leave they haven't used and give them half of that as a bonus.
Reason why we don't do that is because of budget constraints. And the, another reason why it's not done annually, as opposed to waiting until someone leaves and then they get a percentage, is that the IRS regulations allow people over age fifty-five then to process that payout through a special pay plan. It avoids the taxes and the social security. And is, is what is generally done in government, I would say, as opposed to the people that I know and work and hear from in, in payroll. It's very common in business that they do just exactly that. They reach at the end of the year and pay out. Some of them pay out completely and they do that. So there, there are a, a huge amount of options.
I just think that's the easiest way to go.
Well, if we talk about incentive, guys, we keep talking about incentive...
Generally speaking, that would be a pretty difficult thing to budget for, with the smallest and the largest of departments.
So if we're talking about incentive, we're talking about in longevity, it seems this makes sense to move it to ten years.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We all agree with that.
So what are we saying? That the whole package is not good, just the longevity part of it, the tenure is?
There's a motion on the floor.
Whatever's the wish of the Board.
Let's, let's vote.
Mr. Farabee?
There's a motion.
I appreciate if you acknowledge me when you speak, because you're speaking out of line a lot. Thank you, sir. Not to be mean to you, sir, but I'm trying to run a meeting and you're just speaking whenever you want, sir.
Run the meeting and quit speaking then, so we can be recognized.
That's out of line, Mr. Farabee.
I'm, I'm sorry, but the point of order, you're supposed...
So you're allowed, so you're allowed to speak? No. No, Mr. Farabee, you're allowed to speak, but every other meeting, you're telling me I can't. So that's, that's unfair.
Madam Chair.
So stop.
I call, I'd like to call for the vote.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
There's been a substitute motion that'd like to be on the floor. Mr. LaCroy, please.
My, the substitute motion I would make would be to make this as, as is, to make it ten-year. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I can't, because that was my original motion, wasn't it? Yeah. So we have to vote this one down? Yeah, I forget.
Okay. So could you read me, Ms. Caro, the motion on the floor, please?
To continue this, to continue item four until a new human resource person is hired?
Okay. So that would be the motion on the floor. All in favor?
No, we do, oh, well, I still have one more question. I don't think I've got to answer.
Commissioner Busker.
I have an employee of Pennington County for eight years and I retire in April. Which plan am I under now? Will I be under the, will I get 25% of mine or will I get zero?
If, so assuming we pass this today.
Yes.
And we go to a 10-year, they would cease to get any payout for what they earn from today forward. So let's say you have 100 hours today.
No.
No.
That is not.
I was going to say, if that was it, then.
So the answer to your question would be no, unless the effective date is two years from that, from that person, when they hit 10 years.
I just wanted to clarify that for you, it is not the.
And we did, we did look at that. We did look at who do we know that has either voiced intention to retire or is within that age that they could? Who are we going to impact? And under that 10-year mark, there wasn't anybody that we were able to identify looking at staff. So we did take that into consideration, but you could make it effective January 1, 2019 and give people notice if maybe they did have those life plans and we weren't aware of it.
Commissioner Busker, do you have a follow-up?
No, so the answer is, we can't make it a policy today from January 1st on. I mean, because you can't take stuff away from people who have earned it. So.
Based on that, I would highly encourage the vote to be yes on continuing this until we work with the HR director. On staff?
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and do roll call.
Busker?
Yes.
DeSanto?
Yes.
Farby?
Yes.
LaCroy?
Yes.
Hattcock?
No. There's a 4 to 1 vote, I'm saying, uh, no, thank you. Now let's do number three, please. Do you want longevity pay to begin at two, five, or 10 years?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto, please.
I think that we should start longevity pay at five years.
Okay, is that a motion?
I would move to start longevity pay at five years if we so decide that we are going to go with longevity pay. It sounds like we haven't made that decision yet, so that's what I would.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion, so DeSanto and LaCroy, and then.
I have a follow-up question.
Commissioner LaCroy, please.
So KJ and Steph, I know we looked at 10 and this had to do with numbers and so forth, but I guess we'd, according to you guys, you guys could rework anything you, we throw at you. So I think that's, the five-year, I'm not really opposed to, but I think the 10-year, I kind of really agreed with. But, so we'd have some numbers for the 10-year already, so if we come back, we could easily switch back from five to 10 if we want to do, I think, right? I'm looking at you.
When, when we talked about the number three and number four as a compensation committee, we, we were going with the, the thoughts from the board about time of service pay and recognition and the words career employee, which I again heard this morning. And so we put those 10 years in both three and four at our initial recommendation, basically with the thought process of establishing a career employee at 10 years. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody who hits 10 years is going to stay till they're 30, which is what is considered a career employee. But it's, it's, it's a starting base of recognition towards that, is what the committee was, was doing.
Commissioner Farby, please.
And the thought being is this is a second set of longevity or?
Absolutely, that was the.
This is the second set.
Yes, when we talk specifically.
But every employee annually or whenever will get longevity or time in service. This is a second set.
Correct.
Well, I'd, I'd, well, what do you got, five years? My substitute motion would be 10 years. I agree.
I'll second for discussion.
Madam Chair, the other thing I'd like to know is, before I vote on whether we should give longevity pay, I'd sure like to know how much it's going to be.
Um, I believe that was in the initial proposal that we brought it to the board. And I'm winging it, but I do have my file here. We came to the board with the recommendation based on two cents an hour, starting at 10 years and implementing that as an annual payment.
Thank you, Ms. J.
And I did the, and then, and then you might recall, we also gave you another one alternative on that same one that was in, that compared with the state and how they do it. And the dollar amount started at 10 years. And so from 10 to 14, you went 100, 110, 120, 130, 140. That one was 60,000, the two cents a year one, that was the one that's, everyone seemed to like was about 120,000 a year.
So a good question that Commissioner Hattcock asked me yesterday was, are we building something that's sustainable? And I think when you look at it from, from that point of view, 10 years is more appropriate. I certainly, as an employee, would prefer to get mine at five, I think that would be great. But 10 is definitely more sustainable and I think it sends the message that your philosophy is we're rewarding somebody for committing to our, our office.
Madam Chairman. And so how many employees did you say that we had at 10 years right now?
We have about 660 benefited employees. And we have 300 between zero and three.
We're, we're talking after 10, honey.
And, so, so, from 10 to 30, 40.
Forty.
We're getting, got a 40-year now. Not very many is 270.
So 270 times 120 is about $300,000 a year.
But, but it, it was, it's a one-time payment. So it was based on your years. So some of the, the lowest one was, on the two cents was 416 and we stopped at 30 and I would think it was around 1,000.
I do think your, your number's a little high, though, because if you have 300 people under three years of service and 270, 10 and up, you're missing a gap there. So I do think it's less than.
I am, I have it here in, in all my details, so, oh, here it is. Okay, time of service. Yes.
It's not 120 per employee, Commissioner, if that's what you're asking. It was 120,000 would fund that 10 years and up.
Okay.
Attention bonus.
And I do have it here. 76 employees are at 10 years plus. Another 66 are between 10 and 15. 20-plus is 55, 25-plus is 16. These are a little out of date, two months. 30-plus is at nine, I know that number's less now, we had two people retire, so it's down to seven now. So that would be 10. I think where I threw in the 270 was I was including the three to, the 10, 10 to 15.
Okay, any other discussion on number three?
Madam Chair, if I might, the.
Sheriff Farby?
The tough part about costing something like this is the intangible or the part about figuring what, what turnover costs you. How do you, how do you price turnover? And the idea behind if a guy's a truck driver or whatever for 30 years and that's what he's enjoying doing, give him a little, when he starts out, that's his incentive to stay on. And turnover costs, what is, what does it cost? Your guess is as good as mine. So it's really hard to cost something like this, in my opinion.
I only post it on the current numbers.
Yep, understand that.
Any other discussion? Take a motion, all in favor, say aye.
What is the motion again?
It would be to have the 10-year on the leg, ping out on 10-year of the longevity pay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Four ayes with one no, thank you. Are we still going back to number two? Board?
Well, I believe we should, we need to give them an answer.
Commissioner DeSanto? Madam Chair, it would be nice, guys, once in a while, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
KJ, part of the doing this on the anniversary date, if I remember right, didn't that have, at least the employee knows on this date, they know their hire date, but also the bookkeeping part helped out. Can you give me a little bit, refresh my memory on that a little bit?
The January-July went into effect many years ago. And for many years after that was a very consistent thing that occurred in each year's budget. It didn't get taken away, maybe a few times in my years of service here, do I remember it? But not very often. So when we talked about the whole change, rather than dropping it into two groups, January and July, which was tied January with COLA, if in fact it's granted, everything is implemented in the beginning of pay periods. It just had been done that way for so long and so we hadn't really looked at it. Once we looked at doing it by anniversary date, it helped some with this, the compression, the stagnation that's, that's occurred in the last two years with no steps. And obviously, we've grown. And at one point, there was a thought that if we only have to look at wages increases twice a year. We look, there's pay increases in every, in every commission meeting. The ability to pull those people who are eligible from the month before is easily done in our accounting system. And spreading it out over 12 months and having the variables of 40 people in January, 70 people in July, therefore, the people in January, as we would implement, we'd get 12, the people in July would only be getting six. Well, in each, would, would have some budget savings.
Thank you, Ms. KJ. We are almost at about 10:30, guys, so we're only on number two on number 13. So if we have some kind of motion or somewhere where we want to lead to that, board, we need to make a decision here.
That's why I was asked that question. It's easy to get caught up in that automatic, or the, on the anniversary date, but I think there was a lot more to it than just what we've read. And I think KJ did a good job explaining that part of it had to do with the compression and spreading it out, not just one and then discussions. So that was one of the big discussions at the compensation committee. So I, I personally would be more in favor of following what the recommendation was from the compensation to.
Is that a motion, Commissioner LaCroy?
Yes, to make it to the anniversary date.
To make it the anniversary, this is automatic step increase, do we award two steps on anniversary date? You're in favor of that motion?
Yes.
In the motion, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner DeSanto. Mr. Witcher, please.
Thank you, Eric Witcher, public defender. I'd like to speak in, in favor of this particular motion. Right now, all departments, we do our evaluations usually, and I don't know what everyone else does, we do it on approximately their anniversary date. Right now, we get to say, great, thank you for doing a super job, but that's about it. It's a pat on the back. If we could say congratulations on behalf of Pennington County, we're going to give you a one-step raise. That would go a lot, that'd go a long way for our employees to feel respected and, and, and it would be a helpful management tool. So I'd just speak in favor of that, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I think we're actually talking two steps, right? You've, you've asked for two. Am I correct? Lloyd?
Commissioner LaCroy?
Well, the original one was up to two, right after that you get. KJ's the two.
One, two.
Yeah, if I, so that was one of my biggest concerns and I compromised, because I, on the anniversary date part thing, you know, as Eric said, it's a time to say, here you go, you've done a good job. Commissioner Farby wanted automatic, I wanted to be discretionary to the department head. All, both of them, I think, should be discretionary, but he wanted automatic. So that was the compromise that the commission, or the committee come back with. And I compromised on, on the automatic part. But I do like the anniversary, because it deals with some of the, for the compression and so forth. But, you know, now that I think further in the policy, you get in there, some of the discretion is, is if there's a performance enhancement package, then they can hold it back. But otherwise, that was part of his automatic.
Commissioner DeSanto? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Farby?
I have a substitute motion. Raise on anniversary date one step. Call it automatic, call it whatever you want to call it, that every employee, unless they're being disciplined for something or other, on their anniversary date, will get a one-step increase in the grade that they're currently holding.
Is there a second? I'll second for discussion. Commissioner LaCroy?
Would the, would the motion maker accept a friendly amendment up to two, to give them an option, instead of just saying?
No, no.
And I get support of it.
Any other discussion on that?
Madam Chair, if I might.
Commissioner Farby?
Reason I say no is that for the career employees, the tenant above, there's a second set of longevity for incentive. This is all about incentive. So 1%, you look, every year on your anniversary, you'll get this much more in your paycheck at this grade.
Madam Chair, does anybody else want to speak before I speak?
Commissioner Busker, would you like to say anything?
Oh, I don't dare.
Madam Chair.
I'm going to vote no, but I don't dare.
Commissioner LaCroy first, please.
I think sometimes we get caught up in, in, you know, as Mr. Farby said, it's 1%, you know? And if you really stop and figure out what, what the wages are, you're talking 12 cents, 15 cents, maybe at the most, depending on what position they're in. I mean, that's what we're kind of talking about, folks. I think the two steps is, if we're, if we're wanting to keep our employees on, I think the two steps is, is what we come up with. And so that's why I'm in support of the two steps instead of just the one.
Okay, let's, let's take a vote on this if we can.
Make a substitute to the substitute.
Okay, do we, how many substitutes we have? We have.
One.
One, okay, sir.
I'll make a substitute motion that we allow for the automatic one step with discretion to give two.
Sorry.
We have a substitute to the substitute. Any discussion on the discretion, on the?
On the anniversary date.
Anniversary date, yes. Commissioner Farby?
As I said before, this discriminatory across the county, you've got a really, really strict department head this time period, and then he, he or she's replaced with a more lax department head. So what does that do to the employee? He or she is, is dependent upon the wages, depend upon who the, the director is at that point in time. That's uncertainty. The whole pay scale should be something of certainty for the employee. And the certainty shouldn't be uncertainty.
Thank you, Commissioner Farby, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I believe that the, the 1% gives them some certainty, but they also have the incentive to continue to work hard and continue to do their job right and not slack off, so that they can possibly get that extra 2%. And there's always going to be some uncertainty when it comes to your, your managers, your department heads, as to how they'll view your performance. That just comes with every job, it doesn't matter what job you're in, you're going to have some uncertainty.
Commissioner Farby?
One more time, you're, you're trying to cookie cutter the department heads and that's impossible.
Okay, thank you, let's take a vote.
Roll call, please.
Yes, okay.
Busker?
No.
DeSanto?
Yes.
Farby?
No.
LaCroy?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Yes.
Motion carries. We got one through five done, guys? All righty, thank you for your time. Board, thank you for a good discussion, I appreciate that. We are on number 14, items from the auditor.
Glad we get that gal back, D. Warren.
Well, this one will be quick and then we, sorry, Mr. LaCroy. Okay.
These are transfers all from.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second?
I need to abstain.
Moved by Farby, second by DeSanto with one abstention, Lloyd LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're, can we move to table, or remove from the table item number 12, please?
So move.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
By DeSanto to take it off the table, all in favor, say aye.
Very aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Commissioner, can I request a request to postpone indefinitely?
We have a motion to postpone, or a motion request? Busker, his motion, second is LaCroy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you.
Number 15 is items from the sheriff or his assistant. Thank you, Brian.
Hit me again.
Gotcha.
Morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. Office. I'm here today to talk about the security electronics upgrade that we've been working on for the past couple of years at the Juvenile Services Center. We've talked extensively to you guys over the last three years about the upgrade that we did at the, at the Pennington County Jail. The security electronic system at the Juvenile Services Center is over 20 years old also. It's on its last leg and we get very little service from our current vendor and it's in need of replacement. So when we went through that process at the jail, we also were looking at the replacement at that same time to the Juvenile Services Center. So in 2017, we budgeted $200,000 for the replacement, for the partial replacement in 2017 and another $200,000 in 2018. And then in each year, we also budgeted some additional money for building upgrades. So we have the, the full amount for this project actually in our 2017 and 2018 budgets. We have moved forward. in our 2017 and 2018 budgets. We have moved forward with, with the contract with the same provider, Black Creek, that we have in the jail currently. And we're looking for authorization today to make the first, the payment for 2017 for the first two milestones in the amount of $215,000 to get that project moving forward.
Do we have a motion, Board?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. Discussion, please. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 16 and items from emergency management.
Good morning. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. So this is an item that was brought forward from Commissioner Buschard at the, the last meeting. It was a relatively quick comment, and I've kind of taken a shotgun approach. So I'll give you some basic information and, and look for some, some further guidance from the Board. So the comment was made regarding the funding of two stream gauges that are managed by the USGS that for 32 years have been funded through the West Dakota Water Development District. That Board voted to cut that funding, and the USGS was in search of other partners to, to continue those gauges or, or to remove those gauges from the system. So the question was, does Pennington County have a role in funding those two additional gauges? There's a few money options, and I will give you the best data that I have currently. There's still, there's some moving pieces to this. There's a couple of partners we're still in talks with regarding specific dollar amounts. So one option would be to, to continue funding those gauges in the exact capacity operation that they are, have been in. One of those gauges has been operating for 69 years. One of them's been operating for 36 years. We can continue that exact same operation, and that cost share is just under $15,000, $14,785. So just under $15,000 would keep those two gauges running the way they have been for decades. A couple other options. Right now, those gauges run continuous. They're continually monitoring, and there's quite a bit of data processing that goes on with that. One of those gauges in this, and the discussions that I've had have been with the USGS, the Bureau of Reclamation, BOR, looking for different partners, different cost shares, different options on what we can do here. There are, there is the ability to, to drop the functioning of at least one of those gauges from a year-round gauge to a seasonal gauge, which comes with a significant cost savings as well. And I think that affects some of the data that gets processed out of that particular gauge, too. This would be the Rhodes Fork. The Rhodes Fork is a very, very, very upper reach of Rapid Creek. It's primarily used to monitor groundwater conditions, what the groundwater is and, and levels, and I think it touches some aquifer science as well. The other one, the other gauge is a continual, so it's year-round, and, and the hope is that that gauge continues to be year-round, and that's Castle Creek, right at the, at the, the top of Deerfield Lake. So that monitors inflows into Deerfield Lake from Castle Creek. That one, the Bureau of Reclamation is, is very interested in. My office, Emergency Management, is interested in that gauge, and so there's some cost sharing there. Again, the hope would be to keep that a continual gauge, but again, there are some options to, to make that a seasonal one as well, with some degradation in the data that comes from that decision. So that, like I said, about $15,000 to operate them as-is. If we drop the Rhodes Fork down to a seasonal gauge, then the cost to the county, tentatively, if everybody comes back with what they're thinking, would be $8,137, so $8,100. And that would be dropping the Rhodes Fork gauge to a seasonal gauge and leaving the Deerfield as a continual discharge year-round. We can look at decreasing the, the number of months that the Deerfield gauge is in service, but really, that only saves us about $1,300. To drop the Deerfield gauge down to a seasonal gauge would take another $1,300 off that $8,100.
Madam Chair.
Hold on. Commissioner Buschard, you had brought this forward, sir.
Yeah, I guess my question was, you know, are they necessary? I don't want to be spending money foolishly either. And if they're meant to protect their lives or property, fine. If, if it's just to provide more information that we've put in a drawer someplace, then I'm not really in favor of it, but.
So to answer that question as best as I can right now, Rhodes Fork is primarily a, a science slash data gauge. That's, that's the, the information coming out of Rhodes Fork in terms of, of an immediate life threat, a flash flood. I, I don't use Rhodes Fork in emergency management for flash flood warning. The Deerfield gauge, I monitor on a, on a regular basis when we have high water years. The water coming into Deerfield is important. Once you get into the flood control pool, then the management of releases goes to the Army Corps of Engineer, Engineers. And so knowing how much water is coming in, how fast it's coming in, what the elevation of those lakes are, Deerfield and Pactola both, is, is a critical planning tool in terms of life safety.
Are those gauges still there? Are they taking them out?
The, the gauges are physically still there right now.
You have any money?
So that was the next question. So even the MetWarn system, even our flood control warning gauges, aren't funded out of the emergency management funds. It's, it's a separate fund that I manage, that, that emergency management manages. My recommendation would be if the county wants to, to continue those, to be the partner with USGS and potentially the Bureau of Reclamation in funding those gauges, that would be a supplement to that, that same budget that the MetWarn gauges are in. No, I don't have an extra $10,000 or $8,000 in my, in my budget. I've tightened the belt way farther than that.
We'd have to move it some money.
It would, it would require a supplement of whatever our cost share would be, and the cost share I'd recommend would be that $8,100. So if you wanted to supplement the MetWarn budget $8,100, that would be, that, that's an option. But again, all this has to come from the commissioners. That's the information I was able to put together in a few weeks. I'm happy to continue any, any lines of inquiry that the Board may, may request of me, but that's, that's pretty much what I have for you right now, and be happy to stand for any other questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin. I guess my suggestion would be, it's not a motion yet, is to drop the one and just keep the Castle Creek one.
Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner DeSanto.
I would make that a motion, that we drop the, that we keep the Deerfield Lake stream flow measurement and.
Second.
Okay. Was that a motion and then a second?
Gonna have to figure out where we're gonna get the money.
Second by Buschard, but let's have the discussion. Commissioner LaCroy.
Yeah, I, I understand the motions and so forth, but I'd like to have, personally, I'd like to have what you come up with down in writing so I could review them a little bit more and, and think about it before just making a motion on that. Not to say that what you're saying is not important, but is it a dire strait right now to do it?
Yeah, those, those gauges will be shut down. There, there's no funding there beginning next year.
So Commissioner LaCroy, in that note, because we need more information on this, and you have gave us this, I would ask for a continuance. So by the next meeting, we could decide, you know, and I could look into this a little bit more with more information on the agenda about it.
Okay, if.
Second a continuance.
Okay.
Even if you just email us.
It's fine. And, and the thing is, I'm still in, I, I can't give you a, a hard, this is the actual number today, because there's multiple parties involved in negotiating what those cost share agreements are going to be. If you've just funded currently with the talks that we have going on right now, if they solidify the amount for that Deerfield gauge, to continue that Deerfield, Castle Creek gauge, would be $6,337.
But if we continue this, you'll be able to put all those numbers in what you're talking about.
I certainly hope so. It's dependent on, on other entities, but I will certainly work diligently to try to get those numbers solidified.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner.
And, you know, I guess I thought perhaps somebody would be here from West Dakota Water, but.
Maybe we could ask.
Maybe we could ask them to show up. I mean, I'd like to find out why they, the one funded.
Hold on just a sec.
I want somebody from West Dakota.
You're not on West Dakota Water, Mr. Richard?
Nope, not anymore.
Okay. Hey, give me just a sec. Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I just wanted clarification. When he, when he, it's not just the cost that I'm interested in. I kind of like to know the exact bunch, functions that you just talked about for each one, because that's, you know, I mean, it's really easy to sit here and get told one thing, but I kind of like to review it a couple more times before, so.
The, I guess my question is how granular, what, what granularity of information are you looking for?
Exactly what you shared, with the functions of what one does, you know, like the one you're talking about, the flow, this is what you need for you, you know, when you're watching different lake flows and so forth. That, that helps me.
And, and if it's been on there 69 years or 36 years, there's a reason for it, that people never took it off, and maybe there isn't. But that would be nice.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of non-emergency uses for that data. I, I will say that.
Okay, so that's what we want to know.
Okay, I will, I will provide you with whatever information I have. Obviously, my lens, my nexus is emergency management, but I'll, I'll provide what I, what I have.
Thank you. Mr. Richard, please. There's going to be a continuance, so there'll be discussion on this again, too.
Yeah, Dan Richard, citizen. I will give you some background, just for your information. Last fiscal year, which would have been in 2015, the question was raised is just, what are you getting out of this? And to be honest with you, all they could come up was, was, is data. So we agreed on West Dakota, and I was on the Board at that time, that we would turn these into seasonal gauges. And we'd only check these gauges during the spring and summer. At the fall and winter, we wouldn't fund them. And they agreed to that. Then they came back this year for their fiscal year, which is now, we're talking 2016, and they would not agree to a part-time gauge. And they said the one on Castle Creek was just too critical. So the question came up is, critical for what? Couldn't get a, couldn't get a satisfactory answer on that either. And this is all in a minute, and you can watch it on video. And audio, I guess it is, no video. And so the question, the question at that time was, okay, we'll fund you for a seasonal, and then you need to explain to us before the next request why these are so critical. And they came back in 2017 for the 2018 fiscal and just wanted the money and could not get a response as to why these are so critical, other than they want them. And then the question came up, if these things are going for 69 years, who funded them before West Dakota got here? No answer. The other one was, the, the West Dakota's only been funding these for 32 years, and that was, it was probably the first or second decision the Board made after it was formed. And then it's just been going on, and, and whatever, you know. And, and when the question finally came up, you can't get, couldn't get answers from USGS. Now, the other thing is going on, is USGS went from, by statute, is 50-50 split between the USGS and whoever the other person or the other entity is funding. That's the, that's the statute. It's up to 70-30 now. USGS doesn't have the funding, so they're only going to come up with 30%. Now, the question that I had was, when I was on the Board, was, if these are so critical, number one, why you drop to 30%? And number two, why are you going to shut them off? If we don't fund them, why are you shutting them off if they're so critical? Couldn't get an answer off of either one. And that's where it stands today, and that's why they primarily declined to fund it. And they are not tied into the satellite system, so.
Just a question, Mr. Richard. Is there more of these besides those two?
No, these are the only two that West Dakota funds.
Okay.
And I think you need somebody from USGS to come up here and explain to you why they're so critical.
But is there other ones besides these gauges, Dustin, besides these two?
Yeah, there's other gauges. There's probably, what, 170?
In Pennington County, there's roughly 26, 28.
Oh, yeah. We're just a small slip, but there's probably 100.
Hundreds across the state.
Yeah.
I know we're way out of line with our motion.
That's the button.
So motion on the Board is to continue any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, items from Highway Department. Tom Wilson.
Tom Wilson, Highway Department, Highway Department. This is authorization to purchase a ton truck with plow and sander. Several structures in Pennington County have been posted such that we are unable to cross them with a full-size plow or motor grader. We have to cross them with smaller units, which weigh less. The current unit that we're using is a 1998 truck. We currently are in need of a second unit to, to cover newly posted structures to be able to cross the, to cover the routes. And should the old plow break down, we'll need something to cover. This is to get roads plowed in a timely manner for the people. We have found a used Chevy 3500 Silverado, one-ton, four-by-four flatbed truck with 30,000 miles at federal surplus for $24,700. Also need to purchase the plow and sander. Plow and sander would be purchased from Northern Truck Equipment. The plow will be a Boss eight-foot power snowplow with hitch, light, kit, blade, guards, controls, which will be mounted in the cab. Cost for the plow include installation will be $7,491. Sander is a 1.3 cubic yard stainless steel salt dog spreader with a gas engine. The cost for the spreader is $6,150. For your information, these are similar, these two units are the same as what we have on our other plow. Total cost for the completely outfitted unit will be $38,341. Requesting a motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase the Chevy 3500 from federal surplus and the sander and plow from Northern Truck for a total of $38,341.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. Discussion, please.
The only thing I got to say, that, that's a pretty good price, 38,341, fully equipped vehicle to do what it's going to do, so.
This plow also can help us with, in the valley and other developed areas.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Buschard, please.
I think I'm free to make an opinion on this one. I am going to vote no against it. A long time ago, we had a vote to see if we wanted a wheel tax or not, and when that failed, I think the comment was, you know, we're going to have to do without some services out there. And I think this is wonderful.
Okay, there's, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, one question.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Is this diesel?
Pardon?
Is the pickup diesel?
No, it is not. It's a gas one. I wish it were.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Your bus, or what's your name? Farby. Commissioner Farby, sorry.
That's about right, yes. But wheel tax was only for roads and bridges, correct or not correct?
That's correct.
Roads and bridges.
And equipment.
Not roads and bridges. Thank you.
I think this goes across the roads and bridges that Mr. Buschard's talking about, if I'm correct, but.
Well, if he didn't spend it on, on the roads, and when he had money, we could have had money to buy the equipment.
Okay, you two. Buschard, a Madam Chair, once in a while for me. Appreciate it as well. Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One note, Commissioner Buschard, please.
Thank you very much.
Number 18, Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, we've
Madam Chair, we've, according to our last meeting, we wanted to postpone this until we had solid, firm commitments to move forward with a secondary access onto South Airport Boulevard. And at this time, we have negotiated and spoken, Tom and I, with Merlin Stromer, and we have permission to move forward with, we've negotiated with him and have come to an agreement as to purchasing, or will be purchasing with the board's vote. Probably what, Tom? Acre and a half, two acres?
Tom Welsley, please.
I'm anticipating it'll be less than two and a half acres, is what we'll end up probably purchasing.
Cost?
I would have to look in to see what the value, the value of the land is.
It's very negligible.
And that's definitely negotiable with him.
And negotiable as well, yeah.
So, none of this was on the agenda, so should we continue this until we?
Well, we want to, I'm just, I, I'm, what we're asking for is whether or not we want to go ahead and approve Chadrick's request for a building permit, and we were basing that on whether or not we've gotten far enough moving forward to get the secondary access road in, and I believe that we're well on our way. Tom is going to serve, have it surveyed. We have, without a doubt, permission to purchase the property from Merlin Stromer, that he'll sell it to us, and, and I think we, we can consider it done. It's.
Just a question, Commissioner. Before you do the survey, before you do all that, I think you need to bring that forward.
Correct.
To spend the money to survey and stuff.
Okay, yeah, and we, and Tom's already addressing that.
Commissioner Busker.
So, we're paying for this now? Thought he was supposed to pay for it.
Pardon?
I thought he was supposed to come up with the road. Now, all of a sudden, we're paying for it?
No, it was never.
The construction for it?
Oh, by the land, you were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Survey.
Survey?
Survey, yes.
And construction?
That will be coming out of my budget.
Who said? Who, who gave you a thought?
That, that will be on, be coming from you folks. But right now, I am assuming that that's, I'm going to figure the money's for it.
I guess on the thing is, the approval of building permit outside the county subdivision regulations, Howie, this has, it has something to do with it, but it should be on the agenda with it. Commissioner DeSanto, if we're going to talk about it.
I, I figured, just for clarification, I figured I'd be coming to you in two weeks, tell you who the surveyor is I'm recommending we hire, and bring everything to you at that time. I'll have it on the agenda next, next meeting.
So, do we have a motion to continue, because we're not talking?
Well, we're, we're not on the item right now.
I don't want to be negative here, but what do you mean, we're going to hire a surveyor? Don't we have a surveyor?
No, we don't.
I thought we hired one.
No, he quit us, went to work for the Forest Service.
We don't pay enough.
Commissioners, we just talked about, on the beginning of this, about having things on the agenda and having the right information. Now, we're not talking about the same thing, except for a second access. So, in the future, Mr. DeSanto, without sounding mean, you need to put on there, it'd be A about the request and B about the, because you're new, so I totally understand, sir. And B would be the discussion on the road and where we're moving forward on that, sir. Because that would be a whole different motion than talking about requests for approval of building permit outside the county subdivision regulations.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think that the reason that I'm asking for the vote on the building permit is because I was asked at the last meeting to come up with some solid evidence that we were going to be able to, that we were going to be able to move forward with the secondary access road. We've got that solid indication that we are going to be able to move forward, and therefore, that's why I'm asking to have the building permit approved now, as opposed to waiting again until the 18th.
But, sir, the solid evidence would be that it was approved on the second access from this board, and then move forward on the, the Chadrick. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, sir. So, Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mark, I apologize, I know you worked hard on this, because you tried scheduling, trying to schedule our schedules with Stromers and everything else and so forth, and I understand where you've come, how you got to this point. But, you know, I made it very clear at the very beginning of this whole thing, on the secondary access, that taxpayer money wouldn't be spent on it, or, you know, I think the residents need to come forward and help out with it, and I think we looked into parts of that, too. So, until Tom comes forward or tells us what the plan is on the costs, and who's paying what, and where, and knowing all that, I don't, I understand you're trying to get the building permit, but until I have, until this board makes the decision to expel the funds and give direction to do, to go that way, I find it hard to vote on this right now, until that's clarified. Because my member, George, his motion, original motion was, they had to have that secondary access in order to approve, or, you can probably clarify a little bit better, but, so I'd, I'd want to make sure this board approves the funding, and gives the okay to do the survey and do all that before I'm going to approve this.
Okay.
That's where I'm at, but.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So, um, the most, oh, sorry.
For clarification, my motion back in, I believe it was September, was no further permits for anybody across the creek until we have a firm plan in place, and, and I think, I think we're to that point. So, I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Howie one, and only one permit for the three lots that he has remaining.
And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for discussion. I'm, I'm in agreement with the, basically, we need the second access before I agree for the request. Because at this point, that was the motion, is we wanted the second request, and now we're saying that we might get it, and we should approve this, so that's a lot of ifs for me. And I do appreciate all your work as well. Commissioner DeSanto, you have worked very hard on this for a long time, so I do appreciate your work, but I would like to see if the board decides on that second access and who's paying for it at that time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Just clarify. What information do I need to bring forward to get this permit issued? Do I, do we need to have the road built physically? Do we need to have it approved? Do we need to have it surveyed? What exactly is the board looking for so that I can get this accomplished? Do we need to have agreement by the two neighborhoods out there that they're going to help fund it? Which personally, I don't think that that's, they are taxpayers, and so they are helping fund it. And it's a safety issue, and we're going to hopefully get a priority list together of other safety issues that we're looking at, and start working towards addressing those as well. This one just happened to come to the forefront last year because of the situation with the bridge. But exactly what is the board looking for, for me to get accomplished before we can approve this, these building permits?
Commissioner LaCroy.
I guess my thoughts on this was, how this all got started out was, was because of the bridge, and then there was, had to do a temporary bridge, it was going to cost $96,000, something along those lines, and so you wanted to divert that money into making a second exit, access to save money. I understand that. In order to move forward, I think, number one, you've got to have the, the land agreements between the landowners.
Okay.
To either give the right-of-way, or, you know, the access. I think that's the big point. I mean, if it lands there, then you can go to Tom, say you can survey, do this and do that, but personally, I don't think we should be expending taxpayer dollars to do that right now. If, if the landowners gave it up right here now, and then we could work within that budget, I'm saying that 90,000, I think that's the only thing I'm willing to, to work with right now.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
In order to come up with a land purchase agreement, we have to know what we're purchasing, and that's why we've got to do the survey. We, we can't.
Yeah.
Purchase the land first and then do the survey. We have to do the survey first to determine exactly how much land we're going to obtain.
So, on a second access for this board, this is a question for you. Is this a priority for this board to do the second access? That would be the number one question for me. And then the expenditures of it, and then, number three, the funding source, has that been on Tom's priority list as well for a funding source? Because there's a lot of second accesses, and if this is his priority on those second accesses, I'm, you know, I can understand it, but, again, what's the priority of the board? And?
Madam Chair.
I think Tom, one more thing, Mr. DeSanto, I think Tom knows the things that need to be done for this to happen, like Mr. LaCroy said, right-of-way and some other things, and that all needs to come to fruition in one sense, but first, I would get the motion of the board and put this on the agenda to move forward to doing that.
Gotcha, which it will be. Tom's going to do that.
Okay.
But I, I was also under the, not the assumption, but the belief from the discussions we've had in the past, that this was a priority of the board to get a secondary access road put in out there. Is that, am I incorrect in that assumption?
In, in my thought, you have been pushing this for a long time, and, again, I appreciate everything you've been doing with it, but I, I've never heard it was a priority of the board. I heard it, it was something that you wanted to do, sir.
Okay.
So, that was my opinion about that.
What do I need to get it to be a priority of the board?
A vote.
I think it's a priority. I think that it's something that needs to get done.
Bring it forward, like, like we just did, and then get more discussion on it, see how what the costs are from Tom, how much the survey, all the steps, bring it forward at next meeting and decide.
Okay.
Number one, if he has the funding, is it a priority for him? And is his board going to move forward on it with that vote?
All right.
All right, so today, I gave you some leeway on this, in a sense. We are in the request for approval of building permit. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that building permit? Okay, we do have a motion. Are we ready to vote?
Repeat the motion.
To approve one building permit for Lot 3B. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So, three no and one aye.
Okay, I'll get to work on the rest.
Thank you, sir. Number 19, we on consent agenda, A through F, Mr. PJ Conover, please.
I'll take a five-minute break.
Dang it.
Five-minute break. There's been a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you just.
Maybe not.
Nope. Second motion. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're good. All right. Now, we are on the Board of Commissioners use a consent agenda to act as a controversial routine planning and zoning items quickly, so we are on the consent agenda. Mr. PJ, please.
PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and voted the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, minor plat 1741 for Coney Family Trust, Sheila Watkins as trustee, fiscal and serving as the agent, and approval's been recommended. Item B, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1710 and comprehensive plan amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Great Western Bank. The personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates is recommended to be continued to the March 20, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item C, layout plat 1738, Dorothy Johnson Estates, Grand Western Bank. The personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates is recommended to be continued to the March 20, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item D, second reading of rezone 1709 and comprehensive plan amendment 1708 for Carol Marso, DC Scott surveyors as the agent, and approval's been recommended. Item E, minor plat 1742 for Carol Marso, DC Scott surveyors as the agent, and approval's been recommended. Item F, road construction within a section line right-of-way, a review of 1602, Cody Shad, and approval's been recommended.
Thank you. Is there any citizen in the audience that would like to remove any items A through F on the consent agenda? Is there any commissioner that would like to remove any items A through F on the consent agenda for the planning and zoning?
A and F.
Okay, A and F.
Staff has two as well.
Okay. So, can we have a motion on B, C, D, and E on the consent agenda for planning?
Madam Chair.
Staff would like to remove B and C.
Oh, sorry, B and C. Okay, so how about any other removal of items A through F? If not, can we have a motion on item D and E?
Move for approval.
Dang it.
Move by DeSanto, second by Busker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are on item A. George, Commissioner Farby.
Section 20, and on page one of seven, it says lots 1 through 3, parentheses, also in section 20. And that says south half of 17, I presume that's section 17. Is that accurate?
We take our legal descriptions off of Rapid Map. I'm pulling it up now. What is the most important thing is what the title is, it's on the top of the document to be recorded, and that was approved by the Register of Deeds. So, we take our legal description off of Rapid Map, and I'm going to show you right now where that came from.
So, Commissioner Farby, do you have a question, sir?
Well, yes, I ask if that was accurate, and he's going to show me.
Okay.
That it is or isn't.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't.
Register of Deeds did not make a comment on it, and this is where we pull all, pull our information. So, this is Lot 29. Lots 1 through 3, Lot 1 through 3 also in section 20. Whether that's accurate or not, I can't give you an answer to that. This is where we pull all our information.
Back up a little bit.
You want the picture, smaller, bigger?
Well, when you, when you showed section 17, you showed the 17 on there.
Oh, sure, I can go back up a little bit. Didn't you have 20 on the bottom there?
I'm presuming that 17 is section 17. And 20, that 2-0 down there in red, I presume that's section 20. And it doesn't look like that red figure there, whatever it is, that's lots, I presume lots 1 through 3, and obviously not in section 20.
These are put in by Department of Equalization, have to be in check. Again, the most important thing is what's on the top of the plat, and Register of Deeds doesn't have a concern with the title on the top of the plat.
Oh, I see.
We can, but we can correct Rapid Map's legal description, and minor plats, minor plats, plenaries, none of that is, no hearing letters go out of, on those. It is.
That's it.
Yeah.
And Madam Chair, if I may continue, then on page three of seven, existing conditions, Lot 1 through 3 of Block D, and here again, it's got parentheses also in section 20, and section half, half of the section of 17, and our north half of 20. So, here again, that's the same, that's, that's not accurate based on that, anyway.
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a second. Commissioner DeSanto, Mr. Farby still speaking.
And then, under Sub A, or we got VA1 on page three of seven, it says, this is a developmental lot, currently made up of three separate lots. So, I presume that's Lot 1 through 3 of Block D. Those three lots are also classified or characterized as a developmental lot. Is that correct?
The best of our knowledge, yes. And they're splitting off the top portion to create the new lot.
So, if I can continue, so we're going to take from those three lots that are characterized as a separate lot, a developmental lot, or whatever, we're going to take one of them away, and add it on to another lot over here in another block. another lot over here in another block. So what happens to developmental lot? Does it go away? Or do those remaining two lots in that block D, do they become a developmental lot?
Those remaining two will stay as they are. We're just subtracting one of them.
They will. Those two then will become now a new developmental lot. That's a yes or no question.
They don't become a new one. They've never, it wouldn't have changed their characteristics. So we can read the definition of a developmental lot and go through it if you'd like. So because you're not taking away lot two and three, those will stay as is. You're just taking away lot one. As long as they're continued to be sold together and they meet the criteria of a developmental lot.
So, if I can, once again, those three taken together are a lot. Adjective developmental. It could be caught whatever. Anyway, they're a developmental lot. So now that lot no longer exists. Is that yes or no?
No.
Okay. That lot does exist or doesn't exist?
They are three specific lots that have, that show, that have specific characteristics and have shared those characteristics for a period of time. There is lot one, lot two, and lot three per the legal description that you see on before you. They're taking away lot one. Lot two and lot three will still exist. They've been sold together for a certain period of time. And so they're considered by definition in our ordinance a developmental lot. So they are specifically three unique lots, but because of our ordinance, they are considered a developmental lot because they meet certain criteria. So it's not a yes or no answer.
Madam Chair, I'll try one more time.
George, I think we got it. But what's your question, George?
One more time. These three lots, one, two, three, somebody declared them to be a developmental lot somewhere along the line. Now you're taking one of those away. Now you no longer have a lot with the adjective developmental in front of them. Thank you, I'm done.
If you'd like, I could read a definition of a developmental lot. Thank you.
Nope, I think we're okay.
That would clarify everything.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
We go off the...
It overlaps on the lot or on the twenty.
Yeah, the two departments that record the plat and then do the lines in Rapid Map, we go off with the legal descriptions that they do, and that's what shows right here. The plat that's proposed, the legal description on the top has been approved for recording.
Yes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
For ayes, one no. Item B, that'd be the staff.
So the agent who is present in the audience today has requested B be pulled off the consent agenda because the recommendation from the Planning Commission is that it be continued, that they continue rezon seventeen ten and comprehensive plan amendment seventeen oh nine to the March twentieth, two thousand eighteen Board meeting. What the agent would request is that that be amended or that you approve, that it be continued to the March twentieth, two thousand eighteen Board of Commissioner meeting or earlier if the agent takes care of the issues that are outstanding.
Okay.
That's the only change.
Fair motion to change that?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto. Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. Item C.
Item C is layout plat seventeen thirty-eight, again, part of the same request. The agent is requesting to amend the recommendation from the Planning Commission so that it re, sorry, the Planning Commission, that it be continued layout plat seventeen thirty-eight to the March twentieth, two thousand eighteen Board of Commissioner meeting or earlier if the agent takes care of the outstanding issues.
Moved by Buskrud, second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. Item F, Mr. Farby.
As I recall, our motion last time was at the skinniest part, the road would be twenty, twenty-four feet. And on page five of seven, under review, everybody's there on review, under A, one, little A, staff measured the road width in two places. The road width ranges from twenty-one feet to twenty-seven feet. Now, I think twenty-one is less than twenty-four, so are we going to remeasure or are we going to rescind our motion from twenty-four feet to twenty-one feet? Or we're just going to let him do what he wants to do?
Sir, your name?
Kyle Volmer, citizen.
Okay.
At the time of the construction, I was told that I could go off the township.
No, no worries.
Wrong, wrong. You're okay, sir.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
I remember, are you done, George?
For now, yeah.
Okay. On that point, I remember the discussion because we called up Jerome when we discussed if they can get in there because of the terrain it was. And this was originally started out at sixteen and now it's, so I think that's why we're at where we're at. And he did go out and remeasured because there was some discussion of that. So I think Mr. Farby's right on that, but I think we were all okay with the way it was set at that time.
So are you saying?
I'm still, I'm in favor of approval, but...
Okay, let's make a motion then and then have discussion if we could, board.
Madam Chair, we have to rescind, the previous motion said twenty-four. So we need to rescind the motion from last meeting. We're going to go to twenty-one.
That's not on here, but I'll go ahead and take a motion on this for now. Is there a motion?
To rescind?
Nope. Can somebody rescind?
Madam Chair, I think we actually do have to rescind because we all agreed and voted yes upon the motion that it was supposed to be twenty-four feet. And now it's coming back at twenty-one, so I think we do have to rescind that motion. Because basically, we're given permission to do something different than we already voted on.
Not yet, Cody. Brittany?
Sorry, Brittany Moll, Environment and Planning Supervisor. If you do read under condition one, it does say that the road still needs to have gravel applied to the surface. However, the road is still under construction, is not complete at this time. Staff measured the width of the road in two places. The road width ranged from twenty-one feet to twenty-seven feet. That was, to my understanding, the road isn't complete yet. That's why this is just a review. So this is just an updated review of meeting the other conditions because there was new conditions set at the last meeting where they had to get a construction permit, they had to get a survey. So this was a review. They did come in and meet some of the other conditions, but the road isn't complete at this time. That's why there's another review scheduled. Staff is proposing in March of two thousand eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the clarification.
So do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
By LaCroy, second by Buskrud. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Two noes and three ayes, motion passes. Noes were Farby and DeSanto. Okay, regular agenda items, G through J.
Item G is layout plat seventeen forty-three for Kathleen Byron, renter associates as the agent to reconfigure lot lines to create lot five of Reynolds Stage Stop subdivision. Surveying agent is renter associates. I don't believe the applicant or the agents are in the audience today. Basically, if you can see what's on the board, there's two different, two distinct properties that we have here. And one is referred to as, whoops, let me get back down here. Seven Hills Place for MS fifteen oh six and Seven Hills Load, MS twenty seventy-seven. So I'll just be referring to them as twenty seventy-seven and fifteen oh six as we move forward. So as you can see, we have a pretty kind of snake-like lot and then also a smaller lot closer to the South Rochford Road. It's the pieces closest to the road that are the subject of this layout plat request. So the red lines that you see here are the existing lot lines. The yellow line is the reconfiguration of the interior lot line that they're looking to do. So they're taking away from the larger lot and adding to the smaller lot. This is the actual plat in which they're looking to do it. A smaller lot, as it exists today, only has what they're calling a stage barn. We can see that it was put in there prior to nineteen ninety-four, probably in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties. So it's legal non-conforming for where it is. The other lot that has all the buildings on it, the single-family residence, the other outbuildings, that's going to become part of the new lot, the new requested lot. Not really an issue. Everything there is up to, is legal non-conforming or has the required documentation that it needs. The only things that we have questions about on the property is one thing that the agent labeled as an outhouse on the property. So we put some conditions in to address that, which we require more information on that. Also, there was a cemetery that was located on, this is a view from the cemetery. There's a cemetery that was found on the subject property, and we can't, and if you can see it, it's up here on the hill. There's a black fence all the way around it. Now, we do conditional use permits for cemeteries, so it's not a huge issue. The state does have some requirements to put a cemetery on your property. Like I said, we have our conditional use permit, and then also the location of the cemetery has to be recorded with the Register of Deeds. Register of Deeds staff did some research into this. They can't find anything about the cemetery. It's not anything that's going to hold up the layout plat. This is just the first of a two-step process for them. The agent and the landowner are aware of the things that they need to do as far as getting the outhouse checked and having staff go back out there and verify that it's not in use. Or if it is in use, if it meets the requirements for pit privy, then it may remain, but that has to get pumped and inspected to have happened. Neither the agent nor the landowner are objecting to any of the conditions proposed by staff. And it was routed through the interapartmental review, just a couple of things to note for the record. The county highway department plans on doing some reconstruction of South Rochford Road and stated that there's two existing approaches at this time for the property. And when the improvements are done, there will still only be two approaches allowed per the highway department. Register of Deeds just asked that the name on the owner's certificate be updated and changed. This will not increase the number of lots in the area as it's only an interior configuration of lot lines. There is a conditional use permit on this property right now from nineteen ninety-six. It's for a resort area. The new owner was unaware of this conditional use permit. It was approved by the Planning Commission years before the ordinance was in place that actually automatically ends conditional use permits if they're not actually active after establishment or they're not active within a year. So it's going to be up to the landowner whether she wants to retain that conditional use permit for the resort area, amend it, or have it end. Other than that, for purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval of layout plat seventeen forty-three with thirteen conditions.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item H, please.
Thank you.
Good morning. Item H is a request to not submit engineered road construction plans and not to build to ordinance fourteen standards in a section line right-of-way. This property is located pretty far east, just south of I-90 off of two hundred and thirtieth Avenue. Currently, the road is already constructed and it's basically a driveway to an existing lot. But they are requesting that the road construction variances be to the road surface not be six inches of gravel, to submit engineered road construction plans, and to construct the road at a width of twelve feet and length of twenty-four feet.
Move for approval.
And a motion by DeSanto, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Farby. Discussion? Sir, did you'd like to come up now?
Don't pull defeat out of the jaws of victory.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, item I.
And item I is to approve an existing twelve-foot wide driveway located in the section line right-of-way. At this time, the twelve-foot wide driveway does provide access to the southeast quarter of government lot four. It is currently zoned general agriculture district. It is, a portion of it is located in the Crooked Creek Township. It consists of nine point six-two acres. At this time, there is a recreational vehicle that is being used as living quarters, and they currently have a conditional use permit request pending to be heard in front of the Board of Commissioners, or, excuse me, the Planning Commission at the December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting. They do have an existing on-site wastewater treatment system and a small shed on the lot. This was sent through the interapartmental review. There was no items of concern that came up. Basically, they just need approval of the existing road in the section line.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto. Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item J, vacation of plat.
Item J is VP seventeen oh one, vacation of plat for Walter Horton, is to vacate the plat of lot five, also in sections twenty-seven and twenty-one of Moon Ranch subdivision. This was heard at the September twenty-first, two thousand seventeen Board of Commissioners meeting and was continued till the two parties could bring back the recommendation. I did receive an email from Mr. Horton requesting that this be brought back and put on the agenda. He would like to provide some additional information. He did provide a memo in here of some information that he has done on the property. So at that, I would...
Mr. Horton, please.
Mr. Horton, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
I provided some information in an open letter to all of the commissioners earlier, and I followed it up by a little bit longer letter. The Commissioner Farby is absolutely correct. On the twenty-first, we were directed to go back and try to hammer out some kind of mutual agreement. As you see in my letter, we did have several alternatives. They had various issues with each and every one of them. And either they were not acceptable to both parties or not acceptable to one or the other party. And in response to the chair's question in September, the other property owner actually said something to the extent, I support this petition. I just want to do it myself sometime in the future. I would like to also state in the fairness issue, it was discussed at that point in time that our laws in the Constitution guarantee fairness. I think that's a little bit erroneous, as I say in my comments, in that the Constitution and our laws guarantee fairness of opportunity, not fairness of result. We've owned this land since May. The other property owner has owned that property for over thirty years. I lay out, and I like to invite the commissioners to Mrs. Alexander's email that she sent on last Friday stating that, in fact, she couldn't argue with the majority of what I said in my open letter to all of the commissioners. But I would like to talk a little bit about what else she said. She said that I, in fact, haven't been very cooperative. I have been emailing and have had, this is the copies of the email train that I've been sending back and forth. I've made four phone calls long distance to Colorado. I've gone back and re-energized the legal team and the survey team to come up with an alternative legal description, not only for our property, but both properties. I took that and coordinated that with the staff of Pennington County, and the Register of Deeds said it wouldn't be acceptable. I said, okay, fine. Is there, tell me, tell me any other way to come up with a legal description. I'll do it. I'll, I'll do it." And candidly, there is, she informed me that there is not. In our email conversations that I'll be happy to share with you, in fact, Ms. Alexander was fixated on ga, gathering survey data from the Forest Service. That survey data has no impact on the development of a new legal description. Next, she asked me to share with her the perimeter survey that I performed. Candidly, I told her I couldn't do that and I wouldn't do that. And I told her that because that perimeter survey goes and marks the boundary of the property on the ground. There's no document that I can send other than the invoice of me paying to have those folks do that. I, I'm at a loss and that's why I brought it back to the Board of Commissioners, because there's, there is no alternative legal description. And having a bar that I'm going to have to work with the other property owner who, over the course of the last five months, I've done all the work and there's not been anything that has been ethical or lawful as an alternative man.
Thank you, sir. Is there a discussion, please, or a motion? If not, um, I was reading this again, she owned the property since 95, so she has ample fair opportunity to take the action, submit petitions and quest, request categorization. She's done none of that. She is not a resident of Pennington County or the state of South Dakota?
There, there is one other thing, Madam Chair, that I would like to add.
Yes, sir.
And I believe that there is no presentation that doesn't need and warrant a show and tell.
Here's my bottom line, you've been a resident here for 30.
We are already a certified, registered, treable. So I'm, I'm doing this, I'm doing the things that you should do.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Okay. So bottom line is, is she could have done any of this for 30 years and now we're going to delay him because of what reason? So, um, I also.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner DeSanto. Or, geez, I'm having a problem today. Busker.
I have to put a thing for you.
You do. Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion for final recommendation to staff, which is approval of the vacation flat with, under four conditions.
There's a second. I'll second for discussion.
Let's turn the tables around. If you'd have bought that property, HES 551, last year lot, would you be before us proclaiming unfairness?
No, sir, I would not, because as a former commissioned army officer, I believe in following the laws that are established. This was an equal opportunity situation all along and that would have been going into that situation from the get-go, sir.
Once again, and I repeat, make it, make it very clear, if you'd have purchased that property and she, if, let's say that the county commission back 30 years ago when she bought it, she discovered what you discovered, so she took HES 551 and excluded your lot. So now, when you bought that lot, there was no way you could ever get egg status. This is all about egg status, no question about it. The taxes, the tax difference is huge. That's what you're after, sir. And that's wrong. That's wrong. That's absolutely wrong. And.
Commissioner Farby, that's out of line. You do not treat our constituents this way and you have almost crossed the line anyway on the backside of this man doing what you have done to him.
Let me read from his letter.
No, sir. Commissioner LaCroy, did you have, I thought you had something to say.
No.
Okay, I apologize.
I was about ready to talk, sir.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were going to say something. Mr. Farby, be careful crossing the line between commissioner and constituent, because at this point, you have backside of this man on many things. Thank you, sir. Go ahead and speak.
I'm finished, ma'am, unless there are other.
No, Commissioner Farby, yes.
Mr. Horton, so there's no, no other options that, because I, I'll be candid, I had a conversation with, was it Kelsey?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yeah, excuse me, yes, sir.
Had a conversation with Kelsey last night and in my conversation, she wanted to continue on to February so she could gather some more information that she said she could do. Want to ask specifics if it had to do with the Forest.
Yes, sir.
Service and that type of thing. So I, I guess what I'm asking you is, you've been pretty thorough and you don't think there'd be any other options available? If, if this was continued on to February, are we going to be right back in here going through this?
Yeah, you asked me two questions, sir.
Sure.
The, the, let me answer the first question, yes. There is, there is, in fact, we would be exactly right back where we are right now if we would delay. I, this is not Dr. Horton, San Horton, former Colonel, nuclear engineer saying something. I've gone to a real estate lawyer here in the, in town. I've, I hired FMG survey, engineering survey company. I went to them first to develop the initial legal description and when we had the discussion and she said that she may in sometime in the future want to do this vacation of her lot, I went back to the, my, the survey company and had them develop not only another legal description, but one for hers. I took that to Donna. In fact, be, because these two parcels were originally exclusively part of that HES designation, there is no other way to do that according to Donna and according to the legal advice I was given and according to the survey company. So if this isn't just me, sir.
Okay, you know, the reason why I asked that, Mr. Horton, is I asked if she was going to be here and she said she was not. And I also, in our conversations, expressed the same concerns as Mr. Farby stated when he was, when he asked you the question, if it was her doing this and, and so forth. And I said, you know, so we talked about fairness and so forth, so, and I told her where I stood on that. But after reading some of the information and listening today, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Well, well, I'm not.
Sorry.
Just for the record, I'm sure you've checked it out. Can you tell these other four commissioners the difference you anticipate in your tax bill if this goes through?
I don't think that's a question, George, that we need to, he needs to answer or we need to answer. Thank you. Any other questions? No. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with three ayes. Thank you. Item number 20.
Uh, Board of Commissioners, just one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Items from Commissioner Assistant, resolution for support additional mental health services in western Dakota.
I would like a motion to, to support the resolution of.
Seconded by Busker. Seconded by DeSanto.
Signature.
Thank you.
Seconded by who?
DeSanto, ma'am.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kara. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B. Resolution Pennington County elected official wage, do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the salaries you gave what they currently are or what they'll go up?
No, absolutely not. This doesn't affect anybody that's in the position now. This is anybody who wishes to run for that spot would know what their anticipated wage would be.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Who made a motion? No one made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She made a motion.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Ms. Kara.
I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. LaCroy. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of first, or second, I should say. Discussion, uh?
I guess we, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Busker.
All right. I would like to know what their current salaries are, I guess.
Do we have time to continue this, Holly, to the next meeting?
We do. I want to understand where your train of thought is, sir. It, it has nothing to do with who.
I want to know how much we're increasing it. I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the, the county sheriff is at 100,000.
Okay, so it's at 5.9%.
It's 5.9% addition from what it was before. So they were at 75,000, they're at 79,425. They were at 100, they go up to 105,900. My apologies.
No, no, and, and that doesn't affect them now as long as they're in office, or is it during this term?
It's only during the term.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, the Pennington County elected official wage policy died for lack of a second. Do we need to continue it? What's the motion of the board?
It would be my request if the board chooses to make no changes, that you make a motion to that effect so we can get a current resolution in place.
Okay.
Because it hasn't been looked at since 2012, or it hasn't been adjusted since 2012.
Okay, is there a motion for no changes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Busker.
Make the rest of the employees mad.
Is there, is there a second on the motion for no change?
I'll second.
Thank you, for DeSanto. Discussion?
By the way, we can always raise it.
That's right.
I mean, you know, this isn't set in stone either. It, that's what's going to continue until we make a change, but we can make a change at any time.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Farby.
Having read the law, how often do we have to do this?
Um, it doesn't have, the statute doesn't dictate when, but seeing as how positions are elected every four years, we review it in the year before that election comes up.
Uh, so we do it every two years?
We do it every two years, yes, sir.
But, but it, the statute doesn't require a specified time?
It does not specify a time. It just directs you to establish their salaries by resolution and has minimum levels laid out in statute.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have a motion, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. One and O, Commissioner LaCroy. Items from Chair, Commission Members Proposes Revision to Pennington County Policy and Procedure Appointment Process for Committee Boards. Is that you, Ms. Holly?
Yes, ma'am. Jay and I have worked on this several times. We believe it's in final format. If the board so chooses to move forward to a different process, this is what we are recommending.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LaCroy.
I want to thank Jay and Holly for all the work on this. You know, I kind of planted the seed and started things going on. From my very first meeting in January of how we did the interviewing process, kind of, I wasn't comfortable with how they were done, being in public like that. I, I didn't think we were, the applicants were getting, sir, getting the correct attention that they needed and I felt like I was off guard as a commissioner, not being able to sit down with a person and talk to them one-on-one and, and be candid with them and, and that, so I discussed this with several commissioners and other people of how to go forward with this. And I think this would be a good policy, not only to show respect for the applicants, but also, I think it gets the buy-in from some of the departments that are, that are going to be taking on these committees and subcommittees and so forth. I think it's a good idea that you have somebody from one of those departments in on the interviewing process to be able to explain to the applicant, "Hey, this is what we do. This is where we're going." This is, and give some good detail and get some good information out instead of just kind of rushing, you know? Prime example, we had nine applicants for this last, this last one, you know? It's very hard for me, as a commissioner, to, to make a decision by a handwritten note, a long resume. I do know for a fact by sitting down with them and asking some discussions, it helps. You get a good feel for the person and their passion and, and you're able to make a better conscious decision who you want to put on there. And that's where I come from with this, you know? You know, I respect, you know, Ron made a comment last meeting, he thought this was a, a solution to a problem that we don't have, or something along those lines. To a certain extent, yes, it has worked for us, but I think it also brings out transparency. We all know as commissioners, we, we ask people to run for our, to, to be put on a, run for committee or be on a board. And by doing this process of having three people, kind of takes out the conflict of interest for that commissioner, because, you know, you can promote to get people and then they have their interview and they get brought forward, I think. Brings in a little more transparency in my thought. This kind of adds a little more protection in there as far as that goes. But that's where I'm at with this. I, I guess I'd like to, as Holly and everybody else would like to know some feedback on it. We've had it on the agenda for over a month, so there's been ti, or quite a while for time to kind of review it and go through, but I guess I'd just like to hear your thoughts on it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I've read through this several times and I, I like it. I, I don't see anything wrong with it. I think it's appropriate steps to take to get committee assignments and I, I think it's great. I appreciate the work you guys did.
I agree. My thoughts exactly. How about Commissioner Busker and Commissioner Farby?
Well, I was not in favor, but still really not. But since they, now there's two commissioners on the group, I guess I can vote for it. But I, you know, we're giving up our, our wages, we don't make decisions on wages anymore. Now we're not going to make decisions on committees. I don't know what's left to do. I think just stay home.
Thank you, Commissioner Busker.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, um, do we need a motion to approve this, Ms. Holly, today? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Did you say no, George?
No.
Okay, sorry, George. Motion carries with everybody approving. 22 is committee reports. Busker?
Nope.
Santo?
Nothing to report.
LaCroy?
No.
Farby?
You jumped 21. Items from commission members.
22, George.
I'd like, well, but you didn't finish item 21.
Oh, I, I apologize. You can go ahead and put it on 22 if you'd like, George, since there's no committee reports from few people.
This is the second time that I've been on the Pennington County Commission that a motion that I've made and, and was successful in getting passed has been totally ignored. I don't appreciate that. If, if you don't like my motions, sometime later rescind them. But this is the second time. Two years ago, Commissioner Busker and I voted against the budget, along with another individual. My motion, our motion wasn't even rescinded, it was just ignored and so, just for the record, I guess when I make a motion and it prevails, it's, so what? Thank you.
It's not ignored, but people have the right to change their mind, Commissioner Farby, so I understand on some of your stuff, but.
Roberts rules.
When we did the budget, I'm talking, Mr. Farby. So, um, when we did the motion with the budget, is the one I recall, we had made that motion, but when we further got into the budget process, people changed their mind and they're allowed to do that.
Madam. Roberts rules require a motion to rescind.
Okay.
It doesn't say unless it's my motion. It says, "Motion to rescind." It says, "Motion to rescind, needs to be done," and my motion's still out there, never rescinded.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Farabee.
I reflect George's sentiments. I do agree that if there's a motion made and voted on and approved, that that motion should be rescinded according to Robert's order, before you vote on a new motion, and then a new motion may.
I guess I don't have Jay here. I'm going to have to ask on certain issues, I think that is, but not all issues, but I'm guessing, so I'd have to, I'll get that information from Jay, just to make sure that Commissioner Farabee and you are correct. Thank you.
I'm chairman. I forgot something, so. When you come around again, can I say something?
Mr. Farabee, did you have any committee reports?
No.
Okay. Mr. Busker?
I would like to put a couple things on the next agenda. One is, I would like to have Ms. Charity Doyle in to talk about the transformation across the street here, and I know very little about it, and I probably am embarrassed about the little amount that I do know about it, but I sure would like to hear what is going on, if and when it will cost the county any money, and in conjunction with that, the other thing I would like to put on, and, you know, we can vote on these, I don't, I kind of agree, George, we've got to do it correctly. The other thing I'd like to put on is to have the sheriff discuss security. We've got some questions about the treasurer's office, and quite frankly, if we're going to put one of our one hundred and sixty-six homeless people across the street, we may want to consider having security in these buildings.
So, Ms. Holly?
And I would like the sheriff to discuss that item.
Thank you. Ms. Holly, do we have to do a motion to put things onto agenda? No.
You know, I don't, I would like the rest of the commission to say, yeah, they'd like to hear it too. If they don't want to hear it, I don't want to be the only one here.
Okay. So, Mr. LaCroy?
I tend to agree with Ron on wanting to find out some more information from Charity. I do know her schedule is busy.
I understand that.
Through this time of year, so I wouldn't be able to guarantee the next meeting, but I could discuss that with her, if, or Holly can do it, one or the other, but the security, I think, definitely, I think we need to get some discussions going on, not only for our building, but for the Transformation Center that we discussed, so I think I'd like to have those discussions with the sheriff and myself, too.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner DeSanto?
I'm in agreement with Ron, and I also would like to, on top of that, get an estimate of what it would cost to put glass windows in front of our treasurer's office, maybe the auditor's office, I don't know. PJ, have you felt threatened?
(laughing) I had everybody jump across the counter.
Okay. Anyway, at least, at least in front of our treasurer's clerks, there. Bulletproof.
I would think they've had, well, that's a good idea. I think they might have had that somewhere along the line, one time.
I don't know if they did or not, but, you know, with the things that are going on in the country today, and people losing it left and right, I don't want to put our people at risk. I mean, I feel the same way, and I know this is off the subject, I feel the same way about our legislators and our state representatives and peer, they're sitting in a fishbowl that can, geez, something, yeah. And I understand their concern, that we don't have an officer up there any longer, but I'd like to see, what's the cost difference? If we put up a permanent glass structure that's going to protect them, then do we really need the officer? I mean, the officer's an ongoing cost, safety glass is a one-time cost. Good idea.
And I agree, but I'd like to see how many shootings are through glass, or how many shootings are actually, they come in and then they do it, because that would make the difference, you know. I don't know too many that just took the glass, but I know, we keep hearing incidents where they're actually coming in the building and then pulling the firearms, so I'd like to see the difference on some of that, you know. Commissioner Farabee, any thoughts?
I'll move to recommend Commissioner Busker's motion, or idea of bringing Charity Doyle in to...
I don't think we have to take a motion, but I think he was kind of seeing where we wanted to go, and not do all the work or have all the work, so...
That's fishing.
Whatever you know, I know less. I've seen the paper, and I have no idea what they're planning.
Okay. So are we ready to move on to vouchers?
I am.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to pay the vouchers.
Motion by Busker, seconded by LaCroy. Discussion?
I'll say...
Commissioner Farabee?
As usual, I pick out one here, this kind of, I don't know what the ACA conference is, but in Orlando, Florida.
Yeah.
No way. Got a lot of money, let's just go ahead and spend it.
Thank you.
So I'll be voting no.
All in favor of the vouchers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no, Commissioner Farabee. Items for public? Sam?
This weekend, I hopefully will have a story about transmission, but I'm sure that's not going to make you not want to very well, but...
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're going to be here on her behalf?
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Item twenty-five, we have three items in executive session on personnel. Do we have a motion, please?
Motion to move to executive session.
Motion by DeSanto.
Seconded.
Seconded by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by DeSanto, seconded by Busker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.